Okay, 7:00 PM, Thursday, June 11th, 2020. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Greenfield zoning board appeals to order. It is a WebEx meeting. All the numbers are on the posting. I'm not gonna go through them all. I don't know. What did the planning board do, Eric?
They read the notice.
Okay. So, well, did they read the phone numbers and all that stuff?
No.
Alright, fine. This meeting is being recorded. If any other persons present are doing this thing, you must notify the chairperson, that's me, at this time. Anybody else recording this? Okay. Um, then... Uh, hold on here. So, um, the members of the board. I'm just gonna, we're gonna modify this a little bit, try to keep this same. Um, members of the board sitting are Mark Maloney, chairman, Jim Nguyen, clerk, David Singer, Peter Wozniak, and Deborah Jelks. And for the applicants, just so you know, um, we'll do in a minute, we'll have the clerk read the notice. And if you're making noise on your microphone, you probably wanna find a way to not. And then I will introduce, or I will call the name of the first applicant. And then you will tell us what you wanna do, where you wanna do it, and why. Um, from time to time, the board may ask questions, although we're kinda trying to keep the questions all to one time period. At a certain point, we have to open it up to public input. Once the public input is done, the board may have more questions. Uh, once all questions are satisfied, the board will discuss and make a decision most likely tonight. Once the decision has been typed and filed with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period in which anyone who feels aggrieved by the actions of the board may appeal to a court. If after the 20-day appeal period, there are no appeals, or all appeals have been settled, then you can go ahead and do whatever we say, you can go ahead and do. Um, so, for Rachel, do you understand that? You can, uh, you can... All clear? You might have to unmute her.
Uh, you have to unmute yourselves if you want to talk.
That is okay.
So Rachel, right now, we wanna hear from, yes, okay. So you understand all of what I just said?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so introduce the members of the board. And why don't we have the clerk read the notice of hearing?
Notice of a public hearing, City of Greenfield, Massachusetts. Notice is, I give the Greenfield zoning board of appeals to hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 11th, 2020, at 7:00 PM through WebEx on the application of Reiko Jacquet for a property located at 427 Davis Street, assessors map 113 lot 30, which is located in the urban residential IRA zoning district, special permit pursuant to section 200-6 dot 1C and 200-8 dot 3 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow for the operation of a daycare center at this location.
Uh, dog daycare center.
Dog daycare center at this location.
Well, you don't wanna get it shook and chewed. Okay. So, um... Rachel, uh, you wanna go ahead and tell us what you wanna do? Somebody's gonna make some noise coming through their mic, and we have to, we need a...
I muted everyone, Mr. Chairman. If you could unmute yourself again.
Okay, and so, right now, it's me and Rachel. Okay, so Rachel, please go ahead.
Okay, so what I would like to do is, um, open a doggy daycare in, at 427 Davis Street. Um, I have currently, I currently have been running my dog playgroups, which is, um, just basically, I pick up dogs in the middle of the day. We have a playgroup in our yard, which I have a special permit for, and, or in our play area that is indoors, uh, half of a garage. Um, and I've been doing that for the past four years, almost four years. Um, and so I, there's been a lot of demand and requests and asking, people asking when, if I can, if I can open an all-day daycare, and it's, um, there's a, for, there's a demand for that service, and I would like to expand in that way. Um, I wanna be able to accommodate more Greenfields, um, dog owners. Um, and this is, this location is the first place I've found in three years. That's the right size and has outdoor space, um, and already has, um, a business in the area. And, um, during the time that I have had my current business, it isn't in a neighborhood. It is, um, a quiet neighborhood. It's a regular old, um, bunch of houses. There's no businesses right on the street. It's pretty quiet, actually. Um, there's never been any complaints from any of my, of my neighbors. In fact, many of them, I believe, they said they would be writing letters in support and expressing the, um, the fact that it has not affected them in a negative way to have these playgroups. Um, and I intend for that to be the case in the new location. Um, I would love to answer questions if people have them. I feel like that is a good thing to do first.
Um, yeah, hold on a second. We've got another issue going on here.
Okay. Well, I guess I could explain the hours of operation. It's strictly a daycare. Um, I would not be boarding or want to do boarding in the future. Um, it would be open seven in the morning to about 6:30 at night. Um, I do wanna offer pickup and drop-off for some clients if possible, so continuing to do that would be nice. Um, so that would be less tri- traffic coming and going. Um, I also have three indoor spaces planned for playing and one outdoor space for playing. The outdoor space is behind the building. Um, everything would be fenced off fully with six-foot fences on the outside with privacy screens on there as well. Um, dogs would be attended at all times. No dogs would be left alone to bark or anything. Um, as you know, dogs can be vocal when they play. Um, but the reason dogs generally are barking incessantly is because they're being left alone or tied out outside without attention, so that would not happen. Um, uh, trying to think what else is important. I'm nervous. Uh, yes.
Um, let me ask you some questions first.
Please.
Okay, so, uh, I'm, I'm looking at the parking spots, and you've got on your diagram eight parking spots. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, how many parking spots for Kenny's Auto Repair?
Joyce, would you be able to answer that? She's muted.
Uh, who, who are you looking for?
Okay.
So, we have, we have multiple parking spots. Um, to the north end of the building, um, there's a whole area that we use for parking. Um, so we, we don't necessarily need, uh, multiple spots on the blacktop in front of the building.
That's correct, yeah. The, the whole north side of the building, that whole area is, is essentially a parking lot. Um, and so, we put most of our customers' cars in that area. Uh, some customer cars are in front of, uh, the building as well. Um, so, it's hard to say exactly how many parking spaces there are. We never really counted.
How many spaces inside the shop?
Inside the shop? Um, let's see, one, two...
I'm going in a second here.
Oh, probably five or six cars fit in the shop.
Alright. Um, now, how many employees do you have?
Uh, currently, we have three employees.
Okay, so the most number of cars that are gonna be worked on at any one time is three?
That's, well, no, not necessarily. Uh, two is usually the, how many cars you work out at once, you know?
Right, so the most. The point here is, the customers won't be spilling over into her parking. Is that the idea?
Oh, that's correct. Absolutely. Yeah, she'll, she'll have her dedicated parking spots, uh, and we'll have our dedicated parking spots.
That's fine. I didn't, I didn't mean to drag you in right now. You'll have a chance.
It's okay.
But this is all just, we're all doing our best.
Absolutely. No, no problem at all.
That's fine. Uh, Rachel, getting back to you. Um, so you got eight dedicated parking spots. Now, in your application, you talked about movable chain-link fencing?
Yes, that would be in, for the indoor space, so I don't have to build walls and take down walls and everything.
So that's not for the outdoor space?
Yep, and also the outdoor space would have those movable type, the fencing that they use generally when they're building, when contractors are building a building and they have that outdoor fencing that is movable.
It's four feet tall?
Nope, you can have it even taller than that. What's the tallest that they can do?
It's usually six foot.
Mine would be six feet, um, but they can do, it goes pretty tall.
Okay. Alright, um, let's talk about numbers. What, what are you looking, what are you hoping for, for number of dogs?
The goal, um, so, a hundred, if you wanna do it properly and safely and humanely, you want a hundred square feet per dog. Um, the space inside is, um, 3,800 square feet, and then outside, there, there's 2,000 square feet. Um, this would be, so my goal is to have 40 dogs a day, um, total, which there's morning playgroups and afternoon playgroups, and then all-day care. So ultimately, there would never be 40 dogs all at the same time, um, but there, that would be throughout the day. Uh, but it could accommodate more tech- technically, if you're, you know, but my goal is, is the 40.
What proportion of the dogs are full day?
Um, well, that's just really gonna depend on business. I allotted 10 a day, 10, but I don't know exactly what will happen. I don't know what the demand is gonna be more of. I would imagine half-days, but you don't until you do it.
Okay, um... Where, yeah, the, 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 alright, let's talk about, uh, waste disposal.
Okay, so currently, what I do, um, is I have a garbage bin that I actually, you know, immediately when a dog, um, leaves himself, you pick it up, um, just because that's what you need to do in order to stay clean and the whole environment and keep the dogs clean. Um, so that would be, you know, waste is immediately picked up and thrown away into a garbage bin, um, and then we take it to the dump, so, but I know that there's a, um, a dumpster there, so that would be disposed of probably daily into the dumpster. Um, as far as disinfecting, um, the way, the play area would actually be, um, it wouldn't be the grass. We would put down, what, what we do here at my house is we do gardening cart, gardening fabric. You do a layer of gardening fabric. You do a few inches of stone, and then on top of that stone, you do the green, um, outdoor carpet. So everything can drain through and nothing can grow up through, um, and then it's easier to disinfect with, you know, um, what is the words? Disinfect with, um, environmentally safe disinfectants.
Um, 40 dogs is a lot of dogs. It's a lot of urine, a lot of, um, a lot of hard waste, I guess. Um, how many do you have currently where you are? How many do you service on a daily basis now?
Um, on a daily basis, I would say 10.
Okay, so that's, that's quite a jump in numbers for you. Um, how many, how many employees do you have now? Or is it just you?
Just myself.
And how many employees would you anticipate if, uh, you get a permit?
10 employees. Well, you should have, for one person, they should be in charge of 10 to 15 dogs. I would, I would prefer to keep it to 10 per person, per employee. So it could be two people in the morning, two people in the afternoon, um, so...
And you all the time.
And me all the time. Um, until it gets to a point where I can have another management position there, and we can have, you know, three people on during the day or four people.
Um, when you, since you submitted your application, have you spoken to the neighbors, the butters?
I sent letters to each of, to every butter. Um, I did receive a couple calls. I received a call from a gentleman who lives right behind the building, where the, very close to where the play area would be, and he just had a few concerns, and his main concern was a dog just being left out there barking. And I, you know, of course, and he, he also said that he is a dog person and understands that they, there can be noise, but he just doesn't want constant noise, and I assured him that we would not allow that to happen, and I would accommodate, um, a certain schedule if necessary, um, if that was a problem, but the, ultimately, dogs are not gonna be outside all day. There's gonna be periods of time where they're rotated in and out, um, with a person with them at all times. Um, and if the dog is being noisy, we can, um, redirect that, um, dog to be doing something better than just making noise. Um...
How long would they be outside at a time, say? So say it's, it's this group's time to go outside, roughly how long would they be outside for?
Well, um, I, I, maybe an hour. Right now, we do hour-long playgroups. But what, they'll be, it's, there's, the way the schedule works is pick-up and drop-off. Either I'm picking up or people are dropping off is between 7:00 and 9:00. Then the play time is from 9:00 to 11:00. 11:00 to 1:00 is quiet time, so you do indoor activities. They actually are supposed to rest and have some, you know, peace and quiet because it's better for them to not be going crazy all day long, um, with, you know, playing. Um, and then from 1:00 to 4:00 is generally more playtime, and then pickup starts or dropping off dogs.
Okay. Um... Jim? Jim, Jim, where are you at, Jim? Jim Nguyen? Are you there? Is he, is he on, Eric?
Jim, you have to unmute yourself.
That didn't sound good.
Let me just unmute everybody.
Nice with electricity to travel. I'm on mute.
You're good now.
Hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. We can even see. I don't know if that's... I'm gonna read some, uh... I'm gonna read, uh, some comments from the town. And then Rachel, if you're okay... For a minute, we'll have Jim read some, um, correspondence from the public. And then we will open it up. Uh, oh, well, yeah, anyways, let me read the town comments first. Okay, and then I'll see if the board members have some more questions right now. Alright, so Eric, just leave, leave me and Rachel up, please.
I'm gonna have to unmute everybody, and you unmute yourself.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna read, uh, comments from the fire department, right? "May 4th, 2022, zoning board reveals the fire department has no comment or issues with the proposed project at 427 Davis Street in regards to a dog daycare." Um, oh, sorry. Fire prevention captain, Daniel Smith, Greenfield Fire Department. And then from the engineering superintendent, uh... "No comment or issues with proposed project." That would be Alan Torog, correct, is the engineering superintendent?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, this is a little longer, but I want the board to hear this before we go to more questions. "Two zoning board appeals from Mark Snow Inspector Building is dated May 13th, 2020 regarding 427 Davis Street. Following comments related special permit application with 427 Davis Street, the application is to allow the operation of dog daycare center at this location. One, if a special permit is granted, board members may consider to impose a, to impose a condition on any future types of businesses allowed in this space, and that any change should be approved, if approved, type of business requires owner, applicant to reappear before the board to amend the special permit. Mending the permit would be required prior to any actual change. Two, the applicant's plan to not indicate how many employees there would be. Board members may wish to consider the number of employees. Aren't we good? Three, since this property is located in a residential area, board members may wish to consider a condition restricting outdoor activity to limit noise and disruption to other residential properties in this area. Four, tenant hasn't, has not provided a maximum number of dogs she intends to care for, though the diagram shows 13 crates in the quiet room. So, yeah, board members may wish to consider a condition limiting the number of dogs cared for at any one time. Five, the applicant indicates operating hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday with possible birthday potty rentals and the possibility of shorter daycare hours on Saturdays and Sundays. In addition, the applicant indicates she would love to be able to set up after-hours evening community educational training and animal behavior workshops at some point. As zoning enforcement officer, there are concerns, proposed number of days of operation and the level of activity indicated in the applicant's plan can potentially be disruptive to residential neighbors in the area seven days a week. If a special permit is granted, clearly written conditions should be considered to indicate the hours and days of operation and types of activities to limit the impact and potential disruption to this residential neighborhood. Six, board members may wish to require a parking plan for this entire property. Purpose of this plan is to ensure there is adequate parking for the businesses operating on this property and that each business has designated parking areas and spaces. Seven, if a permit is granted, board members may wish to limit signage related to the business. Eight, there are building code-related matters that may need to be addressed. These matters include, but are not limited to, a change of occupancy use, fire separation between occupancy spaces, et cetera. These codes relate, these code-related matters can be addressed during the permit process for a change of occupancy use building permit." Okay, that's the only, uh, correspondence from the town side. Now, Eric, um... Why don't, what, what I would like to do now, and you can leave Rachel's up, is what we will do is go down the line from where we usually, um, usually go. So I'm gonna call on Deb Jelks first, if she has any questions, then David Singer, then Peter, then Jim. Is everybody clear on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, speak for me.
Rachel, you're gonna have to be patient, but, um, so, uh, Deborah Jelks, do you have any questions for the applicant, please?
Um, I don't have any specific questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. David Singer, do you have any?
Thanks. Hi, Rachel.
Hi.
So you talked about 40 dogs, and I understand you're, you were probably considering that in the context of 40 different dogs. What would be the maximum number of dogs that you'd think would be on the site at any one time?
Uh, so, I have a, basically, so I was in my spreadsheet of figuring this out. Um, I would say, um, uh, probably half of, like, 20 dogs in the morning, 20 dogs in the afternoon.
So the...
The goal financially to make it work is to reach 40 dogs a day. Um...
Okay, the 40 dogs a day is under, I understand. And so that, so for example, a dog could come for a half hour, another dog could come for a half hour, and then you get your 40 dogs. But it, how, what would, what would be the maximum number of dogs ever on-site at one time?
I would say 20.
Okay.
Anything else, David?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Peter Wozniak, do you have any questions for Rachel? You gotta unmute yourself, buddy. Can you unmute him, Eric? Okay.
Good evening, Rachel. Do you know specifically what the property line is, as to where those fences are gonna be put up?
Um, I do, well, I do visually. I can't explain it. Um, there's, um, so the edge of, it's basically, I have the little diagram here that I had made. Um, I think you guys all have that. The garage is here, and so the fenced-in play area would be lined up where the garage ends, and go back, and then back to the other side where, um, I'm not good at describing these things. This is visual. Um... The whole building, it's, it's about 2,000 square feet outside behind the building, and it would go to the edge of the Kenny's Auto Repair building over back towards my side of the building.
But do you specifically know where the property line is, so your fencing isn't on someone else's property?
I would have to, um, have the owners help with that. We were able to visually look at that, and they showed me.
You indicated this fencing is, is kinda portable. How secure is it? If you have a big dog that decides to jump up on the fence, we're... Hello?
You're still on. Peter, you're good to go. Keep asking.
Did, uh, did you hear what I asked, uh, Rachel?
Part of it. I didn't hear the whole thing.
How secure is that temporary fence? I mean, you know, will it stand a big dog jumping up against it, so it won't get knocked over? I had that happen on my property with a dog next to me. He jumped over the fence.
Yeah, no, this fencing is, um, it's all connected, so they would have to take the whole fence down. It would not be possible.
The other question I have is, you, you indicate you're gonna put the waste inside a dumpster. What are you gonna do for odor control of, I mean, how long is that gonna sit in the dumpster?
Um, well, that would depend on how often the dumpster is emptied, but we also could just take it to the dump, like we do now.
But if it sits there for five or six days, how, how, how smelly would it get with all that?
Well, everything would be in a bag, so you wouldn't smell it. I currently use trash bags now, um, and dump it in the trash bag. You close the trash bag up, um, and you can't smell it.
One more question on parking. Is there a need for a handicap spot or handicap spots out front?
It sounds like there is, and we would do that.
You've got, you've got, say if you have five employees working at some point, and you've got eight spaces, where are those employees gonna park?
Uh, well, according to the owners of the building, they said they would be parking on the side of their building, um, that we could, that I could use for the employees, if necessary.
Okay, that's all I have.
People generally won't be parking. They'll be dropping off, um, so it, eight spaces should be more than enough for that, including employees.
Thank, for, can you? Eric, am I on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Rachel, I think one of the, one of the board's considerations is going to be impact on the neighborhood. It's a very dense residential neighborhood, which means a lot of questions about parking, so that, um, neither your customers or employees or Kenny's customers or employees will be parking in front of other people's, um, on-street parking or driveways or that kind of, spare that in mind as we go along. Jim Nguyen, do you have any questions for Rachel?
Questions. Uh, how many dogs safely use the outdoor play area at any one time?
At any one time? If it's 2,000 square feet, 20 dogs could, but we wouldn't have 20 dogs at once.
Okay, and I also noticed that you're gonna be Monday through Friday, but you're talking about a Saturday and Sunday hours in that residential neighborhood?
It would depend on the demand from the town. If people were looking for that, then we would like to accommodate. They would be shorter hours. It wouldn't be full days.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, it will depend on whatever conditions we set on the permit, so, um, but that's to be determined. So anyways, uh, any more questions from the board at this time? Uh, you're gonna have to nod your head or signal no. I'm gonna assume that's a no. Okay, Rachel.
One more question. Is there gonna be any lighting, Rachel, in that back play area that would, might be on at night when the, during the winter season?
No, no lighting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Again, that's, that's one of the good things we do is impose conditions, so we can make that. Um... Alright, so, right now, why don't we have Mr. Nguyen be the other correspondence, which is from the public? Because more people are gonna be doing that than trying to chime in on this thing, so, um, Jim, can you do that, please?
Yeah, give me one second.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, we have two letters from the immediate neighbors to the proposed dog daycare, and we have, I believe it's five or six, some people from within the Franklin County area. Which ones do you wanna hear first?
Well, why don't we do the neighbors and then the Greenfield residents?
Okay, hang on. Okay. This is from George, I hope I pronounce this right. Mark Jesus, I am an old guy and do not have the ability to log into the Webex meeting. Therefore, I am emailing you my objections to the dog daycare center at four-two-seven Davis Street. Request that you forward my wishes to said hearing. The area is a residential neighborhood, it should be quiet and remain quiet hours of day and night. Corner of Davis Street and Silver Street is very dangerous in this section. There are several accidents at this intersection yearly. We do not need any additional vehicle traffic. Parking dogs are nuisance. Neighborhood already has an ample amount of them on daily basis. Dogs being dropped off, picked up, and housed at this location will present an unnecessary burden to the intersection and to the neighborhood. I am against any additional businesses of any kind in this designated location. The Big Y complex or similar area, which is designed for this type of business, would be much better. I have lived at my present address, two-four-six Silver Street, for over twenty years. I witnessed many accidents at this intersections. Couple have ended up on my front yard, and I've been cutting my, as I've been cutting my lawn. I wouldn't be writing to this mail right now. There are hundreds of school-aged children walking in and around this intersection weekly, who will also be endangered with added traffic. I am not anti-business. However, I'm definitely against this type of business in this location. This type of business in this location would create havoc in the neighborhood, and I highly recommend that it against it, and pose, since you, George R. and Nancy J. Marcosus. That's number one.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Hey, from Thomas Travis, Cheryl Travis, four-four-one Davis Street.
Yep.
Our notice is hereby given that we received, note, received the information concerning the application of Rico Jacquet for a dog day, dog daycare center at four-two-seven Davis Street, map one-thirteen, lot thirty. We are concerned this might have their, we're concerned this might have the potential to pollute our land located at four-four-one Davis Street, map one-thirteen, lot twenty-five. Attach a letter nineteen-seventy. Please find information regarding the problems we've had in the past and up to the last year when there was a public, blue oil-like substance rising to the surface from lots thirty, dash twenty-nine. Give me a second.
Yep.
Just plug the charging cord into this. Um, there's a blue oil-like substance rising to the surface from lots thirty, dash twenty-nine, dash twenty-eight into our lot twenty-five through the pipe mentioned below. We've had representatives from the town, the Conservation Commission, and others to check as where the runoff came from. We now have drainage into our yard from lots twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, when it rains. This runoff is from a pipe installed many years ago by the past owners of lots twenty-six, twenty-seven. We've spent many dollars and time trying to correct this problem situation. We have no problems with a potential renter of lot thirty, only with the assurance that the town and board health, the animal equipment and urine will not drain into our yard. Signed, Thomas W. Travis, Cheryl Travis. And there's a letter back from nineteen-seventy when they had the drainage problem.
I unmuted everyone, so if you're gonna speak, unmute yourself. I mean, I muted everyone.
Alright, so just Jim, please, keep every, everybody else, let him get through this. Mr. Nguyen?
Yeah, I'm doing it right now. We're loading. This is from folks at one-twenty-six Maple Street. I support approval, the zoning board appeal for a special permit for Happy Trails Dog Day camp at, uh, four-seven-seven Davis Street. Want me to read the whole thing?
Um.
There's about seven of them.
How long is it?
Uh, good whole page.
Read, read this one, and then we'll see about the others.
Okay. For the past three years, Rachel has proven to be a responsible and respectable neighbor while providing dog playgroups at her home through a special permit granted by the zoning board previously. I expect there will be no change in the character in this regard, and being able to expand up to all daycare in new location will benefit the town greatly. Our dog has been intended, Rachel's current dog playgroup, for two years, and we would not recommend this service enough. Rachel has brought so much joy to our dog life. He appeals with excitement when he sees her, and he comes from a happy, he comes home happy and tired. Moving forward, we are so fully supportive of Rachel expanding her business. Greenfield does not have a full-time dog daycare, I think this new business would be a tremendous asset to a community in many ways. I believe that the proposed play, plan is suitable for the building and part of it. Um, part of it. Let me get it back up again.
Did you finish?
Yes, that basically except for the person that signed it.
Okay. Um, so, why don't you read the main part of the other letters and who they're from?
Okay. This one is, is zoning board of appeals. I wish to express my support of Rachel Jacquet and Happy Trail Dog Day Camp. I live next door at twenty-one Frederick Road. As an butter, I am pleased with her well-managed and well-maintained business. For the last three and a half years during the operation of Happy Trail Dog Camp, Ms. Jacquet has always been conscious, conscious and respectful of neighbors. There's been no concern of her business negatively affecting the neighborhood. Prior years are any indication of her ability to run a business successfully and amably. I believe she will continue to be respectful in response to her neighbors at the new location. And, here we go, I have another one from Frederick Road. Zoning Board Appeals, I'm writing in support of Happy Trails Day Camp. As her neighbor, I observed the operation of Happy Trails Day Camp for three and a half years. She's very responsible and respectful. I believe she'll continue to be a good neighbor. Here's one from forty-two Franklin Street. I support approval by the zoning board appeals for a special use permit, permit, propose for Happy Trails Dog Deer Camp at four-two-seven Davis Street. As a Greenfield resident and dog owner, I can attest, our town is long overdue for such service. In addition to creating jobs or providing greenfield in the surrounding areas with service, we otherwise have to drive twenty minutes out of town to take advantage of. This location is ideal, as it is easily accessible from anywhere in town. Over the past three years, Rachel has proven to be a responsible and respectful neighbor while providing dog playgroups at her home through a special permit granted by the zoning board previously. I expect there will be no change in her character in regard, and be able to expand to all daycare in this new location will benefit the town greatly. I believe the proposed plan is suitable for the building and the part of it, the town being requested. I urge the zoning board to approve the proposed special permit for Happy Trails Dog Day Camp. Uh, sincerely, Nicholas and Ben, forty-two Franklin Street, apartment five. Okay. And I think we got, maybe have one more.
There should be two letters in there from a butters in support as well.
I have not seen those yet.
There's, um, there, someone was trying to speak right now, she's on mute, and then there's the, the man who lives directly across the street, Rod Burrell, also hand-delivered a letter, um, I think a couple days ago.
Never got a copy of those, sorry. Going back down through here.
People who are butters who support the business idea. One lives directly across the street and faces the, the building, and one's on the phone, but I think she's muted because she can't, and she can't unmute it for some reason, because she's on a phone. Is it me? Iomae.
Yep.
I sent a chat. Okay.
And I have here one from Grove Street, from Wendy Robinson, fifty-four Grove Street, to ZBA. I write in support of proposed Happy Trails Dog Day Camp at four-two-seven Davis Street. I am a recent Greenfield resident. I've been sending dogs to the Happy Trail Playgroup since moving here in January. Rachel extremely responsible, and I am completely comfortable trusting my dog to her care, and very much in favor of the proposed expansion of her business. Availability of a local all-day dog care will not only be a great benefit for us dog owners and our dogs, it is a needed service that the town currently lacks. Rachel has clearly demonstrated her ability to run such a business in three years, and she's held the play, playgroup at her home with all objections. New location appears to be an ideal place for the proposed business, and is easily accessible from anywhere in town. See what else we got.
Hey, Jim? Jim? Who, who was the last letter from?
That was from Wendy Robinson, sixty-four Grove Street, Greenfield.
Okay.
Are you going to allow, um, people to?
I have one more up, I have another one here from threat, thirty-one Frederick Road, from Abigail Pant, LaPon. And we have another one from two-two-nine Elm Street, from Karen Wessinger, they all approve. And we have one from fifteen Beacon Street, Alara Club. She approves this.
She supports it.
She supports us, and we have one from Jennifer Austin, thirty-three Sunrise Ave, she supports this.
Alright.
And the last one that I have in the file that I received is from Ally. Supports, I have two from immediate neighbors. That is all I've received.
Alright, hold on a second. Rachel? Are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. So who are the ones, you are the butters that sent, um, positive?
Rod Burrell, who wanted to come on the meeting, but he didn't have the proper equipment, and I don't know if he knew he could call. Um, he lives at four-twenty-four Davis Street, which is directly across the street from the building, and then Iomae Gleason, who is here, um, she can talk when you allow her to, and she lives at two-twenty-nine Silver Street.
Okay, hold, hold on a second, let me just, oh, I've got his. Um, so, let me, I'm gonna, Jim, I'll read, um, Mr. Burrell's, because I have it. Uh, to zoning board of appeals, I am writing to you today in support of the application of Rachel Jacquet for property located at four-twenty-seven Davis Street for a special permit operated dog daycare center at this location. My property, four-twenty-four Davis Street, is located directly across the street from the address in question. I've had the opportunity of getting to know Ms. Jacquet, how do you say your last name?
It's Rachel Jacquet.
Jacquet, okay.
French-Canadian, I guess, so it would be Jacques, but we don't.
I had a grandmother like that, um. Ms. Jacquet, over the last eight years, as her USPS letter carrier, ah, okay, as well as observing the nature and conduct of her dog daycare business, both at her current address and during her many and numerous house calls for her customers. Everything I've observed personally, as well as heard or read from others, convinces me that Ms. Jacquet is a dedicated and knowledgeable business professional, as well as a talented, caring, and motivated animal care specialist. Her customers and the dogs in her charge in particular seem to completely appreciate enjoying that, and enjoy that caring and dedication. Given the ever-increasing numbers of pet owners, many of whom frequently lead busy and often challenging lives and schedules, I believe that adding to the capacity, capacity of professional dog daycare options, both for Greenfield as well as the surrounding communities is of vital importance. Having a larger, more practical, dedicated space would allow Ms. Jacquet to continue to offer and expand her important services to this community, and I believe would be a welcome addition to my neighborhood. Indeed, I look forward to my dog becoming one of her closest customers. Et cetera, et cetera, Rodney A. Burrell, four-twenty-four Davis Street. Um, I will also, I'm, I'm not gonna read them all, because we'll be here another week. Um, we have another letter in support from Maureen E. Walsh and Laura Carey. Uh, don't know where they live. Doesn't say where they live. Um, another letter of support from Matthew and Don Kempf at twenty-two Durin Drive, Greenfield, which I've never heard of. Another letter of support from Iomae Kaban, oh, that's her, two-twenty-nine Silver Street. Right? Is that, uh, no, that's not the neighbor neighbor. Yes, it is.
Iomae Kaban, oh, here she is.
Yep, I'm, I'm here.
So, um, what, why don't I read your letter, and then you can, you can chime in too, okay? Alright, just wanna make sure we get all the letters, uh, into the record. So, dear members of the zoning board, I support approval of, by the ZVA of the special use permit proposed for Happy Trails, Happy Tales, sorry, Dog Day Camp at four-twenty-seven Davis Street. As a supportive neighboring homeowner to the proposed property and dog owner, I can attest, our town is long overdue for such services. In addition to creating jobs, it will be providing greenfield in the surrounding areas with the service. We otherwise have to drive twenty minutes out of town to take advantage of. This, this location is ideal, as it is easily accessible from anywhere in town. Hmm. Wow, a lot of them say the same thing. Over the past three years, Rachel Jacquet has proven to be a responsible and respectful neighbor while providing dog playgroups at her home through a special permit granted by the zoning board previously. I expect there will be no change in her character in that regard, and being able to expand to all daycare in this new location will benefit the town greatly. I believe the proposed plan is suitable for the building in our neighborhood. Um, I am urging the zoning board to approve the proposed special permit for Happy Trail, Happy Tales Dog Day Camp. Sincerely, Imae Kaban, two-twenty-nine Silver Street, Greenfield. Um, also a letter from Kate and Mike Finn, seventy-six Laurel Street uh, in support, also a letter from Georgia and Tom Moore, eighty-four Cottage Street, in support. Um, a lot of these say the exact same thing, so I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Uh, also a letter from Marge Fisher, two-forty-three Conway Street, in support. Also a letter from Andy Guy, uh, forty-three Homestead Ave. Jim, did you read that already? Just nod. No? Okay. In support, sorry. A letter from Megan Belial, nine-seventy Bernison Road, in support. A letter from Susan Fisk, forty-one Oak Hill Road, in support. A letter from Elizabeth Moore, eighty-three Fairview Street, in support. You emptied my printer paper. Uh, a letter from Kathy Coughlin of twenty-eighth Sutter Lane, in support. A letter from Randy Humphrey, thirty Congress Street, in support. A letter, letter from Heather Mahoney, eighty-three, eighty-three A Fairview Street, in support. A letter from Julie Maloney, um, fifty-three Forest Ave, in support. And then some out of town letters, which will be in the file. Um. Way too long. Uh. Did we, I I heard Frederick Road mentioned, so that's Edith Karpinski. In support. Nicole and Ben Rigel, forty-two Franklin Street in support. Joyce Karpinski, yeah, I think we read her already in the uh in support. Yeah, okay, so now we're going to open it up to people who have joined us on the phone or on the Webex site or whatever uh, for public comment. So um, this is for public comment. It is not a Q and A with the applicant uh, or the board. So Ione, um, you've been waiting patiently, so why don't you go?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, uh, yes, I'm a neighbor to that business, but I've also been a pa- my dogs have been a past client of Rachel's and a good business, a good doggy business, like someone said in the comments, means that you don't have a bunch of barking dogs because she engages their bodies and their minds. So I want to say that my dogs actually learned so much from being with the groups that she set up, especially because she set up like-minded groups and she does have some um kind of guidelines for behavior for dogs. So I think she's going to be an asset to our neighborhood. I live on a street with lots of dogs. Um, so I think you will be looking forward to this. We're not going to hear a lot of barking. If you hear barking, it's probably from my house. Um, so you can write me up for that one. And uh, just in full support, I don't see tons of hundreds of kids walking down the street or lots of accidents on that corner. So uh, that's all I have to say. I vote yes, if I get a say for Happy Tales.
You support it?
Yes.
To say you get. So, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anybody else who's joining us from the public who would like to make a public comment at this point?
Um, I'd like to speak up at some point.
You just have to tell us who you are and where you live.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yep, we can.
Okay, um, so my name is Judy Damaris. I live, um, I own a house on Vermont Street, which is pretty much kind of kitty cornered behind the property that she's looking at. Um, I have two perspectives on this. I own a house on the street, but I'm also, I manage a veterinary hospital in town. Um, and we also have a boarding facility and a doggy day camp. So I know the noise and I know what goes on in a busy environment like that. Um. So my first concern as a neighbor is the noise. Um. My day camp may have up to thirty dogs a day. Um. My facility, we can hold up, oh, we can hold over fifty animals in the whole hospital. Um, but when you get that many dogs together, they make noise. Um, I have experienced animal handlers that work with our camp and they work with the dogs and, you know, I I give Rachel a lot of credit for doing this. There's a great demand for it in this area. Um. But it is very noisy. Um, no matter what you do, playgroups make noise. So the idea of a seven to seven in a very quiet neighborhood is a huge distraction. Um, this neighborhood is very quiet. So seven to seven with potential weekends, that to me is, it's just not the right neighborhood. Um, the other concern of is the the smell. Um, I understand you pick up the stool right away. We do that too. But yearning over time, if you're talking forty dogs in a yard all day, every day, over time, I know you clean, but it doesn't get rid of that smell. On a hot humid day, it is disgusting. Um, that's just the reality of it. I know this business. Um. Um, other concerns, um, I would wonder what type of vaccinations are required here. Um, certain diseases that dogs can carry um are zoonotic. Um, I would hope that leptospirosis is a vaccine that is required. Um, I would worry about how often the animals are having fecal screenings. Um, we require it every six months at my day camp in my kennel. Um, there are certain parasites that can live in the ground. Once you get whipworms in the ground, you don't get them out. Um. And everybody knows about roundworms with children. I just, there's just a lot of concerns for a residential area. Um. And I know she says she's not offering boarding. Um, I guess I would wonder what happens if owners have an emergency and they can't pick their pets up. It happens. Um, you know, I I see it not every day, but it does happen. And when dogs are left overnight in our boarding facility, that's they're out of their norms. So you know, if that would ever happen, situations arise that you just, you need to make sure you're covered for. And it does happen. It doesn't happen often, um, but it does happen. Um, and a dog, if they were stuck in a cage on like, in this neighborhood, we would all hear it. Um. Um, a couple other comments. Um, I know she said the business right now, it sounds like, is just a couple hours every afternoon. So a couple hours every afternoon is one thing, but when you're turning it into a twelve-hour day with potential weekends, that's a whole new world. Um. You know, I definitely support the business. I know there is room for it in Greenfield. We need it. My place is swamped. Um, but it's just, it doesn't belong in a quiet residential neighborhood. Um, the dumpster will smell, even though you put trash bags, the poop in trash bags, it does smell. Trust me, I know. Um. And I know she, um, Rachel had talked about redirecting barking dogs and that works with some, but it doesn't work with all. So you know, like the same thing with a busy neighbor or quiet neighborhood around, it doesn't always work. And the larger the playgroups get, if you're talking up to twenty dogs, dogs make noise. That's part of what they do. They bark, they play, they make a lot of noise while they play. Um. And just a note, just so you're aware, then the parking can be a nightmare, even if it's drop offs. Um. If we have twenty dogs dropped off between seven AM and nine AM, the parking is a problem. Um. We are actually looking into redoing our parking lot because of that, but it is, it is a concern. Um. I, that was, those are mostly my concerns. Um, you know, like I said, I don't want to shoot down the business. I think it's an excellent business. It's a lot of fun. It's great. Um. It's a, it's a lot of hard work, but it just, it doesn't belong in this neighborhood. This neighborhood is quiet and it would definitely change the dynamic of this quiet neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Are you all set? Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Alright, uh, any other public comments on the application for the dog daycare?
I'd like to to speak up. Can you hear me?
We can. You have to tell us who you are and where you are.
So, um, I'm Kelly Dixon. I live at two-forty Silver Street. Um, I did make a comment in the chat. Um, my property literally butts um the the property in question. So that dumpster that has been mentioned is literally within five feet of my yard. So um, so I definitely have a a close proximity. Um, I um, just one, wanted to thank everyone for their time and consideration and and everything you guys have done to um to really look at this and to think of all angles. There were something, some questions and concerns I had um, earlier this week and did reach out to Rachel and she was able to answer a lot of those questions and concerns. Um, but there were some that were brought up this evening. Um, that I'm grateful that I had an opportunity to get on here for. Um, so um, again, thank you all for that. So the, probably the biggest thing for me is now thinking about that dumpster, um, because I am so close to it. Um, and just wanting to know if there is a a specific schedule, um, that can be answered as far as how often it would be emptied. Right now, it doesn't currently have any odor coming from it. Um, I've been here um, on this property since September of two thousand nineteen. Um, and then um, probably my other concerns would be just really truly around um, the hours. Um, I I am also concerned a little bit about a seven to seven schedule with some um, weekends. I don't know if there's some um, consideration that we could put into maybe a little bit less on the hours or or something to that effect. And um, the question of lighting um, for nighttime, I'm assuming, um, and I didn't think about this question. I'm assuming the reason there's no need for lighting um, to that backspace would be because um, the dogs would be sort of in their uh, waiting inside in their pickup mode and they wouldn't necessarily be outside during uh, later hours. Um, but I was just wondering about that. But overall, I I think as long as you all um truly just put in um you know, all the details and specifics, um, I trust that you um, will do a really great job at that. It sounds like um Rachel has already done a a great job and the community does need something like this. I would definitely be uh, in favor of supporting something like this as the person that literally lives right next door. Um, my my property line touches that one, so um, I am in support of it.
Good, thank you. Um.
Yes. Can I come on?
Hold on one second. The thing the board does is impose conditions on the permits we grant. So the, we've done I muted everybody, Mr. Chairman, if you could unmute yourself. Yeah, we've done a fair number of number kennel permits and this is essentially a kennel permit. Um, and one of the conditions that is always in there is disposal of waste. So I think everybody can assume that the board will, if we're inclined to grant the permit, um, be fairly stringent on on that. So just bear that in mind for everybody who's already raised it and for anybody else who wants to come on and make comments. As I said before, this is for public input. Um. The board will hear what you have to say and will ask any questions that uh, need further clarification. Um, but the applicant can't really respond to your questions herself. So with that, anybody else who wants to weigh in on the public input part of our uh, application here?
Yep, um, I'd like to weigh in on this. Uh, my my, yep, my name is Sandy McGill. I live at thirty Vermont Street. I spoke to um, Rachel with my concerns. Um. I am in support of her having the doggy daycare. That's the first thing I want to say. Second, I'd just like to address uh, the noise issue. I happen to live part-time in Maine and I take my dog to a do- two dogs to a doggy daycare and have dropped in on them several times, different times of the day. And that doggy daycare is not noisy. Um, and with the right person in charge who knows the business, we won't be disturbed by a lot of barking. And Rachel, you might address this, but when we talked, the dogs would be inside um, as they arrive, probably seven to nine and not be outside barking at seven in the morning. Um, as it is, I have a neighbor whose dog barks at six-thirty in the morning and wakes me up. So nine o'clock sounds pretty good to me. But again, I just want to say I'm in support. I think the town could use it. Um, and I think everyone will be pleased in the end if she is allowed with reservations. You can make her job um a little easier, I think, with reservations as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, yeah, somebody, somebody waving here at us.
Yes.
There we go. Okay, so just your name and where you live.
I'm Amy Mo- I'm Amy Moscaratolo. I live at forty-three Country Club Road. Our property actually backs up to Davis Street, so it's sort of over the hill behind us. Um, I'm a lifelong dog owner. I'm a lifelong animal owner and Rachel has been caring for our dogs in our home occasionally. You know, she's, she's done doggy daycare for us in our home um, for about three years. And I have, in my, in my lifetime of being around animals large and small, have rarely run into someone who is so engaging and responsible and responsive and professional with animals. And I have full faith in in Rachel's business plan and what she would like to do and uh, and her ability to to run a really good, solid business because she's doing it already. You heard from her, um, we all, we all heard from her current neighbors who are living with her doggy daycare now and are in full support. I think that speaks volumes. So I certainly echo um, all the support of Rachel's business. And I really thank you all for for considering her request and hopefully um, we'll prove it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public wanting to weigh in?
I would like to, please. Yeah, actually, I'm Joyce Drake. My husband's Gerald Kenny and we do own the, we do own the property and um, we are
Before you get going, I have a question that you can probably answer.
Sure.
Help the board. The northern boundary line is how far away from the north side of the garage?
How far do you think that is?
You said it's far enough to park cars. Sixty feet?
Yeah, it's probably
Somewhere around there.
Let's say fifty feet just to be, okay, but it's, it's more than is the point.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, there's, there's plenty of room back there, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I just figured why I had you before something else goes wrong here.
So, it's okay. Feel free.
Go ahead and make your comment.
And we are beyond thrilled to have Rachel. Um, I've only recently met her. Um, and she is very energetic and ambitious and and um, I have spoken with other people who do bring their dogs to her that can't say enough about her. Um. And we've had some concerns like about noise. We we worry that, you know, that it might be a distraction or or an issue. But she has assured us and anyone that we've spoken to has assured us that um that this is going to be a great fit for all of us.
Okay, that's great. Uh, I gotta get back to the camera thing here. Okay, anything else? Uh, and by the way, here's another question for both of you. How often do you have your dumpster picked up?
We currently only have it picked up, um. Yeah, yeah, and um, I would like to address I know we're really not supposed to be answering questions, but we have considered moving that dumpster because that would be additional parking for um Rachel. So we've considered moving it over to our side of the building, which would actually be a benefit to us because we use it frequently and we oftentimes have had heavy things we put in there, so.
I was also going to ask if we could because it's near the entrance, which isn't the most
Exactly, yeah, exactly. That's exactly what we were thinking. So
We've already thought of that.
Yeah, so we we would put it in a better spot, actually. And um, and and then there, that would be a buffer from uh, Kelly's property. And um, there, there would be plenty of footage between dumpster and the other neighboring property. And uh, it would make everybody's life happier, I think.
Okay, well, we'll see. But uh, we appreciate the input. Okay, you all set? Okay, thank you. Anybody else who wants to weigh in at this point? Uh, actually, this is the only point to weigh in. So if you got something to say, uh, now is the time to say it. Anybody? Eric, do you see anybody on the line? I'm sorry.
Michael Kachet.
Yeah, are you on the phone? Are you still there? Eric, do we lose him?
Right on the line, five. Okay. Can you hear me now?
We, yeah, we do, we can. We could.
Across the street from Rachel. And uh, she's actually, I've lived there for about a year and a half. And she's been very responsive. She actually, uh, I didn't even realize she had a dog uh, play business there. She's actually, it was a friend of mine was a customer of hers and uh, brought it up. And she apologized for the noise and actually I told her, I've never heard dark dogs barking from there. Maybe some other neighbors, but not from her. So I completely uh, support this. And uh, like to tell all of the butters that may have concerns that Rachel will be there to hear those and do what she needs to to fix them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else for public input? Seeing none, hearing none. Nobody's throwing things at me. Nobody's waving. Okay, so we're going to close the public input at eight oh nine PM. Um, now I'm going to see if the board has other questions. We have two other matters on the docket tonight and we're well past their public hearing times. So we're going to try to satisfy any other questions the board has. Uh, let Rachel make any comment she wants to make at this point. Then we're going to move on to the things that we're forty-five minutes late for. We'll take care of those. The board will plan on dealing with this tonight. Everybody is welcome to stay. Um, stay uh, and watch what we're doing. Um, Rachel, you should probably um, stay in case we have any further questions after we take care of the other two applications. But for now, what I'd like to do is go back down the line, Eric. But for now, what I'd like to do is go back down the line, Eric. To, we'll start with Debbie Jilks. Debbie, if you have any questions or comments. You're gonna have to unmute yourself, I think.
Hear me now?
We can.
Um, I have some things for, when we have our discussion, but I don't have any specific questions for Rachel.
Okay, that's fine. Then hold on to those for our discussion. Okay, thank you. Uh, David Singer, any questions?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Peter Wozniak, any questions?
I don't have any questions at this point. Maybe later when we talk about it more.
That's fine, thank you. Um, Jim Nguyen?
No questions at this time.
Okay, that's great. So Rachel, uh, do you have any comments you want us, you want to make after all this correspondence was read and you heard from public input?
Yes, um, I just want to, I appreciate what everyone has said. And I think that the noise issue is going to be something I can control. And if, if not, I will have to, I mean, when I first started the business here, it was really like if a dog's going to be too loud and cause problems, I told people I may not be able to keep them in group because I live in a neighborhood. So if there is a specific dog that, and I, and I haven't had to eliminate anyone because of that reason. So I don't believe it would be an issue. I will have employees that are trained well and we will continue to do continuing education on dog behavior, body language, and how to manage playgroups. So that we can have a great experience for everyone. I am always, I'm always open to making a collaborative experience in the neighborhood. If people are having any issues, I want them to come and talk to me and I want to make it better because I don't want it to be, I don't want it to be something that everyone hates. I really want it to be something that people are, either don't even notice or are happy about. So that's not an issue. And I toured many doggy daycares in, in my research and thinking if I wanted to expand this. And if you're keeping your facility clean and doing everything required, there really shouldn't be any odors. I didn't smell any odors in the facilities that were kept very clean. They've been around for years. So I'm not agree, I don't agree with that factor. And I did notice that when, in facilities where dogs were very loud, it was because they were left in their crates or they were boarding and they weren't interacting with other dogs. And if, and if people have issues, I hope they'll contact me. Would love, when we, when we finished, when we created the special permit for my current business, I was happy to have guidelines that we went by. And one of the biggest guidelines was basically that we would go with the plan, but if there was issues, if there was enough complaints, we would revisit. And I'm perfectly happy to do that. But I feel like that, I think that my plan is pretty good the way I have it. I think that I've thought about others being affected. And I hope that we can see how it goes with it maybe a stipulation of we need to revisit this in six months to a year, or if there is complaints, many complaints, then maybe we revisit it. But I, I hope that you'll at least give me the opportunity to prove that these issues should not be an issue. And I'm willing to work with everyone on that. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you can rest assured that if the board is inclined to grant the permit, there will be plenty of guidance. So we call them conditions. So again, I would, I would ask that you stay available. While we deal with these other things and then we will come back and do the board discussion. Your permit first. And then we can stop the public input now. And then we'll go on from there. So anyways, hang out for a bit and we're gonna move on now. Yes, we are. Okay, so the board has said they don't have any further questions for Rachel right now. If we actually run into a problem later, she'll be available. So we're gonna move on now to the seven fifteen. Hearing. Jim?
Notice is hereby given that the Greenfield Zone and Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing Thursday, June eleventh, twenty twenty at seven fifteen P M through WebEx on the application of William Jones for property located at fourteen Minor Street, assessors map forty-six, lot eleven, which is located in the general commercial G C zone district. Special permit pursuant to section two hundred dash four dot nine, C six, and two hundred dash eight dot three zone in ordinance in order to allow the conversion of the building from an office space to a single family dwelling at this location.
Is Mr. Jones on with us, Eric, or no?
I'm right, I'm right here.
Mr. Jones, did you hear my my opening statement about how this works?
I actually, I don't know. I don't remember if I did or not.
Well, I, I never get tired of talking, so I'll, I'll say it again. So in a second here, uh, I'm going to introduce the members of the board sitting and then you can introduce yourself. And then you will tell us what you want to do, where you want to do it, why you want to do it. Then the board may have questions from time to time. And then we'll open it up to public input. Once public input is done, then the board may still have questions, although I doubt it. It's pretty straightforward and we'll make a decision tonight. And from the time, once the board makes a decision, it will be typed up and filed with the town clerk. From the time it's filed with the town clerk, there is a twenty-day appeal period in which anybody who feels aggrieved by the actions of the board may in, uh, Superior Court or Land Court or what have you, higher courts than us. If at the end of the twenty-day appeal period, there are no appeals or they have been settled, you may go ahead and do whatever is, uh, tell you you can do. You all set with that?
Sounds good, yeah. Thank you.
No problem. So the members of the board sitting are Mark Maloney, uh, Jim Nguyen, Peter Wozniak, David Singer, and Deborah Jilks. And you are?
I'm William Jones.
Okay, so Mr. Jones, tell us what you want to do, please.
Uh, I would like to convert the, uh, the space at fourteen Minor Street, uh, Greenfield, Massachusetts into a, from, uh, from an office building into a single-family dwelling. Previously, uh, the business was much larger. Uh, my wife and I owned it and, uh, we had employees here. And so when we purchased the building, we had converted it into office space for that. But since that time, um, the business has sort of consolidated down to only myself. I'm, I'm just a freelance, uh, software developer. So, uh, there's really no need or, or requirement for me to have an office. And at this, as well as that, my wife and I have divorced. And so the fact is we own two properties. And she, uh, is taking over the, the house and I would really like to use this space as my, uh, my dwelling. So I'm hoping to, uh, again, to convert it from office space to, uh, to single family.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to, uh, okay, um, it was originally a single-family dwelling, correct?
Correct, yeah. It looks like, it's, it's just a house. It looks like every other house on the block.
We have friends in the neighborhood. So what I'm actually gonna do, I, I don't have any questions on this. I'll go down the line from the board for questions and then I'll read the correspondence we have, which is very little.
Yeah, if I could add to that actually too, just to, just to clarify, um, there's really nothing that I'm looking to do. We had renovated the, the, the building, um, private, uh, previously and there's nothing special about it because it is a software business. There's no, uh, commercial equipment or any of that kind of stuff. It's, it's just the, I, I'm sure you have pictures there, um, if you haven't seen them already. There's really nothing I'm trying to do here. I just want to literally, uh, move in and, and, and use it as a single family.
You want to return it to the single family.
Correct, yeah.
And it would be you and one child or something?
Yeah, I have a, a fourteen-year-old daughter that's here part-time.
So it wouldn't be a commune. I mean, there wouldn't be fifty cars parking out front.
Uh, no, uh, just my, my, my.
It doesn't, it doesn't work very well on WebEx or Zoom, whatever the heck we are.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I missed it.
All right. So we'll, we'll go down the line again, please. So Deborah Jilks, any questions for Mr. Jones?
No, I do not have any questions.
David Singer, any questions for Mr. Jones?
No, I just have a comment. Uh, I went down your street looking for the property, thinking I was gonna find a commercial building that was you were looking to convert. And you don't have a number on the house, I don't think, or I couldn't find it. So if you saw somebody turning around four times, it was me. But I finally looked at the picture and I see exactly what you're doing. You're just in a tough spot that, you know, you, you lost the grandfathering and now you want the house back as a single family, so.
Exactly, that's, that's the case.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Peter Wozniak, any questions for Mr. Jones?
No questions.
Okay, um, Jim Nguyen, any questions for Mr. Jones?
I walked by the property the other day. It's a beautiful location. I'm glad to see it's going back to, uh, single family. And you answered a question I was gonna ask. It's could be owner occupied, I believe.
Yes, sir, yeah, thank you.
Okay, good luck to you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna read some correspondence. I don't believe there's any other except from the town. We've ordered appeals from Mark's now inspector buildings dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty. Running application for fourteen Minor Street. There are comments related to special permit application fourteen minus the application of allowing a building from office space to a single-family dwelling. Everybody understood every word I said, I'm sure. Are building code-related matters that will need to be addressed? Those matters include, but are not limited to a change of occupancy, use, the change of occupancy use, smoke slash carbon monoxide alarms, et cetera. These codes related, these code-related matter can be addressed during the building permit process for change of occupancy classification, which if the board grants you the change of occupancy, uh, so you'll need to talk to the inspector, the building inspector. Dated May fourth, twenty twenty, two zoning board appeals regarding fourteen Minor Street, assessors map forty-six, lot eleven. D V A, not even D V A, really, you gotta talk to these people. The Greenfield Fire Department will require an inspection of a compliant alarm system at fourteen Minor Street if the current office is converted into a single-family dwelling. Private intervention captain Daniel Smith, Greenfield Fire Department. Which I assume you knew anyways. You'll need to talk to him and see if what you have will be good. And then from the engineering superintendent, no commentary issues of opposed project. Eric, I believe that's all the correspondence we've gotten. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Okay, um, so, Mr. Jones, anything else you want to say at this time?
I know, I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, board members, we'll go down the line again. Let's make this also any comments you had, because we can, we can take care of this really quick. Um, Deborah Jill?
I don't have any questions. Um, as far as comments, obviously we want to put the condition on about making sure that the, uh, fire inspection is all set.
David Singer?
Same thing. Uh, I have no objection. Um, just the condition which is inherent that, you know, Jones, you'll have to go through the building inspector in order for the house to be, um, he'll give you a change of, uh, use.
Okay.
An occupancy permit, but other than that, no.
Peter Wozniak?
I have no more additional comments to Dave or Deborah's comments.
Okay. Jim Nguyen?
No comments at this time.
So, um, and neither do I. Mr. Jones, I just want to check one more time. Anything else you want to add?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. So, um, I will make the motion to grant the application of William Jones for property located for, oh, uh, crap, sorry. Not quite. Is there anybody joining us from WebEx or the phone that wants to make a public public input? This is our public input hearing portion. Anybody? Going once. On twice. Nothing. Okay, public input is closed at eight twenty five. Okay, going back to, I just lost my place. Okay, I'm moving that we grant the application William Jones property located fourteen minus three, such amount forty-six, lot eleven, which is located in the general commercial zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash four point nine, C six, two hundred dash eight point three of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the conversion of, of the building from office space to a single dwelling at this location with the following conditions, that the applicant satisfy all the requirements of mentioned by the fire department and the building inspector in their submittals. Who's seconded, please? Thank you. Okay, so we moved in second. It is a discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed by the same sign, motion carries and declared unanimous. Okay, Mr. Jones, you're all set. Um, you'll need to get in touch with Eric next week and see when it goes to the but other than that, you should be good.
All right, thanks you guys. Take care.
Okay, so Jim, Nguyen? You're gonna need to unmute yourself. Why do I never get these things? Jim, are you there?
Yeah, let me read the next one.
Yeah, hold on a second. I want to, I'm listening to something here. All right, yeah, go ahead.
Notice is hereby given that the Greenfield Zone and Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June eleventh, twenty twenty at seven thirty P M through WebEx on the application of Fred Wheeler, the property located at twenty-four Place Terrace, assessors map one oh one, lot twenty B, which is located in the urban residential R A zoning district or a special permit pursuant to section two hundred dash six dot three, hundred dash eight dot three of the zone in ordinance in order to allow the conversion of a single business to a whole occupancy with a single-family home located at this location.
Okay, is Mr. Wheeler with us?
I am.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, were you here for my description of how this process works before?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you understand that if the board's inclined to grant the permit, it will be filed, it will be typed up and filed with the town, city clerk. And then, uh, once it's filed with the city clerk, there's a twenty-day appeal period in which anybody who feels aggrieved by the actions of the board may continue on to a higher court. If at the end of the twenty-day appeal period, no, there are no appeals or they've been settled, you may go ahead with whatever we tell you can go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so again, the way we'll do this, I will introduce the members of the board. You'll introduce yourself and then you'll tell us what you want to do, where you want to do, why you want to do it. From time to time, I may interrupt or other members of the board may interrupt with questions. At some point, we will open it up to public input. Input is done. To mute other people.
I muted everyone.
So I mean, once public input is done, then, um, we will, uh, discuss and figure out what we want to do. And again, we may have some questions for you then. But there we go. So the members of the board are sitting are Mark Maloney, Jim Nguyen, Peter Wozniak, David Singer, and Deborah Jilks. And you are?
I'm Fred Wheeler and this is my wife, Janice. And we live at, uh, well, we live on Place Terrace now with my father-in-law, taking care of him. We've been on Place Terrace for forty-one years, or actually for forty years this month, we actually purchased the property here on Place Terrace. So we've been here for forty years. And, uh, we built this present building in two thousand and three. And so I've been here working out of this building since two thousand and three. And, um, so now what I'd like to do is when we built the, the building, we built an upstairs that was big enough to make it eventually a home. And that was kind of our idea from the very beginning. But, uh, so we've been working in it as a, as a shop for a sign business and, um, been here all that time doing that. Pretty quiet, uh, nice neighborhood. So in those seventeen years, I really haven't had any issues with any neighbors as to the. in those 17 years, I really haven't had any issues with any neighbors as to the business aspects here. And what we'd like to do now is I'm 62 years old. I'm thinking of slowing down, retiring. I don't have any employees anymore. It's just my wife and myself. And so just going to continue a small business, and I'd like to be able to live here as well and finish off the upstairs, make it into our home. So that's really what the plan is, and there's a lot of room here to do that. And so pretty much where I am.
Okay, thank you. So, so your plan is to have no other employees?
No. Not, no. I've been down that road. I'm I'm past that now.
Okay. I'm going to ask a few questions, then we'll we'll go to the board. Actually, what I'm going to do first is going to read a letter from the building inspector, and there will be some questions that the board will key off that, and you may be able to answer them before we, you know, go any further. So from zoning board appeals, two zoning board appeals from Mark Snow Inspector Building is dated May 13th, 2020, special application 24 Place Terrace. Calling car comments related to special permit application 24 Place Terrace. The application is to allow the conversion of a sign business to a home occupation within a single family home. Board members may wish to impose conditions for any future types of home occupation allowed on this property, and that any change to the approved if approved type of home occupation requires the owner applicant to reappear before the board to amend the special permit. I think the permit should be required prior to any actual change. Two, board members may wish to impose a condition to require the home occupation owned and operated by the owner and resident of the property. Three, board members may wish to limit the number of employees. Four, board members may wish to require designated parking spaces for the home occupation. Five, board members may wish to limit signage related to the business. Six, our building code related matters will need to be addressed. Those matters include, but are not limited to a change of occupancy use permit, fire separation between the home occupation and residential use, minimum number of exits, smoke slash carbon monoxide alarms, et cetera. These code related matters can be addressed during the permit process for a change of occupancy use building permit. To the zoning board of fields regarding 24 Place Terrace from the fire department, the Greenfield Fire Department will require an inspection of a compliant alarm system at 24 Place Terrace if the current sign business is converted into a single family home. And from the engineering superintendent, no comment or issues. Mr. Wheeler, so the plan is to to continue the business operate, the home occupation, the same home occupation?
Yes.
The same place, but converting part of the space to the home residence?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay, just trying to clarify.
Yeah.
For us. Now, so you understand if the board's inclined to grant the permit, you'll need to talk to the fire department and the building inspector code compliance for fire alarms and smoke alarms and things like that, carbon monoxide alarms. The board may make a condition which just says no employees, and that would take care of the parking issue on its own, if you're good with that. Just something to think about before we actually get to other questions, but oh, let me ask you about the signage. What do you have for signage?
I have a two square foot sign right now, which is I had a permit to get in a residential neighborhood, and that was what was allowed, and that's that's all I have right now.
And that will be staying?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's okay. So I don't think we need to worry about that so much. Okay. Then what I'm going to do is go down the board once for questions, and then we'll open up to the public input. I don't believe we have any other correspondence on your application, so I'll check with Eric, but. Okay, so Deborah Gilks, do you have any questions for Mr. Wheeler?
No, they've been answered. Thank you.
Okay. David Singer, do you have any questions for Mr. Wheeler?
Got to unmute Dave.
Got to unmute David. Looks like you still.
Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Wheeler for your patience. Do you live, does it, so this property is totally commercial use at this point?
It is.
Okay. And you gave us a floor plan. Thank you. That's that's your floor plan for the second floor?
Yeah, very close. Yeah.
I mean, so the home occupation bylaw or ordinance here says that you can't have more than 50% of the property as as a as the business. Is that going to be a problem? Is it going to be, is it, is there going to be more residential space? Is it going to be 50 50? What's it going to be like?
No, um, let's see. I have my office and the garage. Let's see. I had figured out that the workspace would be 1,288 square feet, and the home usage would be 1,552 square feet. So it's a little bit more for home.
Okay, good.
I have I have a basement under the office here that's pretty much personal storage.
I think it's definitely personal storage.
To make sure that you don't fail on any technicality here.
Yep.
That that answered that answered my question. Thank you.
You all set? Dave? Okay, thank you. Peter Rosniak, any questions for Mr. Wheeler?
I have no additional questions.
Thank you. And Jim Nguyen, any questions for Mr. Wheeler?
No additional questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Wheeler, if you want to hold on a second, we'll see if the public has any input. So this would be the time when anybody who is joining us on WebEx or on the phone or by carrier pigeon would weigh in if they have any comments on the application of the Wheelers for 24 Place Terrace. The crickets are chirping. Okay, Eric, we didn't have any other correspondence beyond what we have in our packets, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So from my perspective, you satisfied the requirements for home occupation, for continued home occupation and a conversion of more space than you that is required to the home occupancy. The sign will remain what's already there. Parking will not be an issue. Oh, do you have any, Mr. Wheeler, do you have any outside?
Lights.
Lighting. Thank you.
I do on the just like motion detectors and.
I mean, like on the sign or.
No, no, nothing like parking lot, big lights or anything, no.
Right. Thank you. And now, how many parking spaces do you actually have?
I have four line spots, but I also have another spot behind that I park a little trailer in. So I probably have five theoretically.
So, you know, I'm I'm just wondering, Eric, would we need them to have an identified handicap parking space? For home occupation?
No, not for home occupations, Mr. Jones.
All right, so we're fine. So we're good on that. So that's all the questions I have, I think. For the board members and for Mr. Wheeler to the Wheelers. My intention is to go down the line one more time, and then I think we can dispose of this with alacrity before we get back to the dog daycare thing. So if the board members are agreeable to that, that's what we'll do. So having said that, Deborah Gilks, any other questions for Mr. Wheeler?
No, I have no additional questions.
Okay, Mr. Singer, any other questions for Mr. or Mrs. Wheeler or the Wheelers?
Is that where we're at? Just asking additional questions or are we talking about what we're going to do?
Let's just make it additional questions. It's easier if there's.
I have no additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Peter Rosniak?
No additional questions.
Thank you. Jim Nguyen?
Additional questions.
Okay, Mr. Wheeler, anything else you want to say before we get to the discussion part?
Just appreciate your time in considering this, and I'm hopefully driven by here. It looks like a home. That's what I've always tried to make it look like in this neighborhood. So I'm trying to keep it very clean and up kept. So and that's what I plan to do for the rest of the time.
That's fine. Thank you. Don't go anywhere just in case, but I don't, I think we're probably pretty good. Okay, so now let's get to the 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 discussion part of things. I'll start, and then I'm going to go down the line again, okay? I don't have any issues with this. I think we could make conditions that require compliance with the fire department's alarm mandates and the building inspectors concerns here. Mostly in number six. I think we just, we, if we want to, we can put a condition on that says the sign remains the same, and if there is a change in either the the home business use or the home occupancy use, it would need to come back before the board. Other than that, I have no issues with this. So having said that, Debbie Redjelks, your comments, please.
I guess one of the things I, there's a comment on here about limiting the number of employees. I don't know if we're looking to make that a condition or to say no employees or one employee. So I know that needs further discussion, and then just, you know, I'd want to make sure that you know, everything was taken care of in regards to conversion about the fire separation and meeting those building codes.
Yeah, no, that was, that's definitely going to be a condition. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. David Singer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric, if you could help me. It'd be my understanding residential. So the use of this property for residential is allowed by, right?
Correct.
So once that happens, then you're asking, then the applicant is asking for a home occupation, which needs to satisfy 6.3. So as long as the occupation is 50% or less, there are some other criteria, owner occupied, for example, then it's really a relationship between the owner of the property and the building inspector, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I I feel, I did drive by the property, and just like the other person, it took me, I had to turn around to find it because it didn't look like anything but a residence. I have to tell the board that there's a lot of room there. You could put, you could actually have a business with lots of parking there, considering you have a big lot. So that's really not, the parking's not an issue. I don't think the family's use of the property for this purpose is an issue. I think just whether the board itself wants to set limitations or conditions or wants to have the building inspector do that as, so what everybody's pleasure is, but I feel inclined to certainly grant this request.
Okay. Good. You all set?
Yeah, I don't have, the point is, I don't, I don't have any conditions because I feel like it's the building inspector who looks at the property and sort of does that. But if you, as Mr. Chair, think that we should get a little into the weeds, I will follow your lead.
Yeah, I I think, you know, it's just a matter of having anything come back to bite us. So it's being used as a business now. He wants to use it as a home also, and that, yeah, I mean, your point is right. But we just want to make sure we don't upset too many.
We can bless the business as it is, and that's the home occupation. So we'll bless that. He can convert, he can add the residence, wrap it around and use the same business. We can live in employees, and we can make it an owner occupied situation as those are conditions. And then, of course, he has to go through the building.
Yeah.
Permit, change of use, which is out of our jurisdiction.
Right. I think I think that's where we're going with this, though. Okay, you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Peter Rosniak?
To piggyback on Deborah's comment, are we conditioning it to no employees or just allowing what's under the regulation?
I I'm inclined to say under the regulation, but because it is the special permit, we can say up to mid, we could, we could make a condition up to one non-family employee if we wanted, but again, we don't have to. We, you know, we can leave it for the regulations.
My suggestion is we leave it to the regulation.
Okay.
I'm inclined with that as well. I mean, I know he commented about the fact that, you know, he's looking to, you know, slow things down, but in my opinion, he may want to have somebody who can keep his business going while he's doing other things. So I wouldn't want to say no employees.
Um, okay, Peter, you good?
I have no additional comments.
Okay. Jim Nguyen?
I'm good with this. I'm glad to see it's going back to a single family. I remember walking home from North Parish School, cutting through the sideline to get to Mrs. Baker's to get penny candy. So I'm glad to see it's going back to a single family. Good luck.
Wow. Wow, that's that's like penny candy, huh? Okay.
They had it.
Not that long ago. I remember penny candy.
The young, the young whippersnapper remembers it.
Yep.
That's fine. Okay, so, so why doesn't somebody try a motion? Who wants to try a motion?
Let Deborah try a motion.
That's fine.
Oh, God. Here we go. I would like to prove, I don't know how to do this, propose a motion that we go ahead. I'm sorry?
Say, I move.
I move.
Yep.
That we grant the request to allow for a owner occupied addition renovation to allow him for home use above his current property with the condition that he adheres to, was it the building inspector? Guidelines in regards to that. Did I miss any conditions? We were leaving the employees to regulations. We didn't need to cover the parking.
Yeah, that's that's more or less right. All right, so Eric, what we're really doing is two things here. We're allowing the conversion of a home occupation to a single family home, but the home occupation continues, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So what I think I heard Debbie say is the motion is to grant the application of Fred Wheeler property located 24 Place Terrace, assessors map 101 lot 20B, which is located in the urban residential zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200 dash 6.3 and 200 dash 8.3 zoning ordinance in order to allow the conversion of a sign business to a home occupation within a single family home at this location with the following conditions, which were Deb, you want to go through that again?
The condition that they adhere to, whoa, where's the piece of paper? The compliant, having the compliant alarm system as requested by the fire department as well as the conditions put forth by whatever the building inspector says needs to happen in regards to the change of occupancy use permit, fire separation between the home occupation and residential use, and then minimum number of exits, smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, et cetera. Those will need to be addressed.
That's fine.
And the building inspector is satisfied.
Right. And I would propose the following conditions that the home occupation is owned and operated by the owner and resident of the property, and that the any change of the home occupation would require the applicant to reappear before the board to amend the special permit. I think that's it. Okay, Eric?
Yes, Mr. German?
Okay, Peter, was that you?
Yes.
Okay. So Deborah made the motion, Peter seconded. Any further discussion? Board members may weigh in here. Sitting none, are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then all those in favor of the motion and conditions, vote aye. Okay, then all those in favor of the motion and uh, conditions, vote aye.
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 Any opposed by the same sign? Seeing none, all, uh, yeah, right. So the motion carries and unanimously. And Mr. Wheeler, you, you heard me at the beginning say, Eric will type this up, he'll file it with the city court next week, hopefully. Um, and then there's a 20-day appeal period, but as I said before, we didn't get any other correspondence. And I know that this special permit notification went out to a whole bunch of people. So hopefully you're good. Okay, anything else, Mr. Wheeler?
No, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Mark, I gotta grab a charging cord, I'll be back in 30 seconds.
Alright, uh, we'll take a recess for two minutes or whatever.
Yeah, call this a bathroom break.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so this is a little.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder of meeting minutes after her.
Yep, thank you. Oh, I, I thought about doing it while Jim was off, but eh.
After the board is on break, so.
Yeah, well.
Quick, quick, while they're gone.
We're gonna, we'll do it as soon as we come back in, Eric. Jim's back, but David's not, where is he?
Up to 59% on battery with a charging cord, so we're good.
Alright. We're still waiting for David, anyways.
Yeah, Mark, this is Peter chiming in.
Yes, sir.
I had mentioned to Eric earlier that I received an email earlier today asking for me to be, asking if I was interested in still staying on the ZDA and I indicated to Eric, I had, yes, I am, I think I indicated several couple months ago.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, see.
And I got the same email again today.
I, I, yes, I have copies of your response, Peter, so. Um, you know, my guess is town hall is not as, um, a little less organized than they would probably want right now. I will send an, I will send an email out when we get done here. Mayor.
My concern is I wanna make sure I'm a legitimate member if we have a meeting in July.
No, yeah, no, no.
So, you know, just, just an FYI, I don't wanna have some, you know, some technicality occur that I'm not a official member in July and we take a vote or we, whatever, so.
No, that's fine. Um, we'll make sure that happens, so don't worry.
The city council will have to do it. Have you, and, and so they'd have to do it this month, but I think it may be, I could be wrong. It may be that you serve until somebody else is appointed to take your place.
Yeah, I don't, there's no issue here. Um, I, I'd spoken to the mayor previously, I'd spoken to his assistant. Um, so I, you know, it's, it's a question of probably stuff get lost, uh, shuffling back and forth between the uh, town hall and the John Zahn Community seniors education.
The other, the other thing is, Peter and Jim, you can look at the uh, agenda for the meeting for the city council.
Okay. So, we will, uh, we'll take a look at that later. In the meantime, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the?
So moved.
Yeah, that, okay. Uh, moved and seconded, all those up, here we go, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it was our last meeting minutes before the bug struck.
March 12th, I believe, right?
Yep, that was it, last night before everything got shut down, we were the last board to meet. Isn't that a privilege?
We probably should have met that night.
Public, that is, I should say.
Alright.
Okay.
You ready?
Now, is Rachel with us? Do you know?
Still connected.
Yeah, she'll come back.
I see her there, she probably just stepped out for a second.
Okay, um, so what I'll say to the board is obviously the residents have legitimate concerns. Obviously, it is a dense residential A neighborhood. Um, lots and lots of testimonials uh, on her behalf. I think, Eric, can you bring up the uh, the permit we granted her before? Can you bring it up or can you put it on screen or something?
I can't do that, but I have it in front of me if you wanna read it.
Okay, that's helpful, yeah.
Eric, condense it.
You sent, didn't you send me a copy of that, do you know when?
I did, it was the last week.
Alright, and I'm gonna try to find that while we wait for Rachel to come back.
Rachel's back. Rachel is back.
Okay, well, hold on there.
It's here, I just had the, the volume down.
That's alright. I wish I did sometime.
We just figured you toned us out for a bit, you know?
If you can't find it, Mr. Chairman, I could read these.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Well, why don't you hold on?
The chair.
Alright, Mark, we're only gonna give you so many seconds.
Oh, well, I gave Jim like half an hour.
Mark, are you at home in a second?
I'm at home, hold on. Um, I'm gonna print this out so I can read it too.
Well, if, uh, I was thinking you can share it, right?
I'm not, not on the web, but I know better than Zoom, so I'm not sure.
If you try reading it on your iPhone, it's awful, you need a magnifying glass.
There's a button, share content.
There is, I have to practice with that before I can experiment with it.
I've been working from home since March, I have a lot of practice now.
Okay, so now I just gotta get back on camera here, or get the camera back to me.
Okay.
Yeah, we see ya.
Alright, um, so I, I, I'm gonna start just to, because, um, so I think this is, you know, people laugh, but this, the thorniest applications we get almost um, are dog kennel permits. Um, I think we did a really good job on the one we did with Rachel a few years ago. I think there are a couple of concerns, the parking, um, the disposal of waste, the noise. Um, and I think the other stuff is pretty straightforward, oh, the numbers. Now, we can limit the numbers, we can limit the hours of operation, we can limit the days of operation. We can, um, we can, and, and this came up in one of the permits we did a few years ago. Uh, we, we made a condition that they had to dispose of the waste at least three times a week. Um, now, we can either say it's the business's responsibility or she can work out a deal with, uh, the neighbor with the dumpster. But I think, you know, that, that's open to all kinds of things. So, hold on, let me see. Can you guys see that?
I can see it pretty clearly.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are the conditions, I'll read them out too. But those are the conditions we imposed a few years ago on the Frederick Road property. Uh, can I take it down so I can actually read it now?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, you know, the number of dogs allowed shall not exceed 10. The hours of operation shall occur between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Overnight boarding of dogs is prohibited, well, it says shall not occur. This special shermet- permit shall be for the sole purpose of, uh, Rachel Jaquay and Ja- Jaquay, sorry. And her, and her business Happy Tales Pet Care, Care, and shall not be transferable to another person or business. At the discretion of the animal control officer, unscheduled site visits shall be conducted at the property. The animal control officer shall report to the board within two weeks after the site visit. If the control officer submits two negative reports to the board, the applicant shall come before the ZDA during their next regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, the existing six-foot-high stockade fence shall be maintained. Equal amount of dog kennels, still dogs, shall be provided at this location. The applicant shall provide a protected area for dogs in times of inclement weather. So it all seems pretty, pretty common sense to me. Um, and I think if we, if we are smart about this, then, um, permit can go ahead with, with liberty of privacy, that, that's my hope. So I think probably what we should be talking about is a limit on the number of dogs. A limit on the hours of operation, a limit on the days of operation. We're going to need to include a condition of the parking. Um, uh, can do, this is an owner, this is, this is her business. And that's it. If the business is sold, then whoever has to come for a new permit. Um, the animal control officer thing, I think, is good for all concerned. Um, they've never been abusive of it and it, it gives the butters, uh, a feeling that their, their interests are looked after. And obviously, we've never had a problem with Rachel in the past four years or whatever it is. Uh, the stockade fence, they're saying a six-foot-high construction fence, that concerns me a little. But, um, you know, we can talk about that. Equal amounts of dog kennels to dogs, I don't think is doable. Say, say we allow 40 dogs in one day, any given day. Um, I just, you know, that's, that's a lot of kennels to, to, to try and fit into that space, maybe. Uh, and we'll ask Rachel if that's possible, but I would say maybe enough kennels for half the dogs at any given time. But again, again, um, and this is something I neglected to mention, or any of us did, about inclement weather. So if, if the dogs are outside, is it simply bring them back inside if it's snowing or raining? Or is there a covered area? I don't see a covered area in a plan she submitted. Um, the other condition that should be is, uh, that the plan they adhere to is submitted in terms of the outdoor play area. Um, and, and the, the schematic, for lack of a better word, of the in, indoor area. Um, so those are the things to think about. Um, Rachel, uh, so let me just ask now before the other board members weigh in. Um, what about inclement weather, snow or rain or what have you? Do the dogs come in or are you gonna provide a protected area outside?
So, when it comes to inclement weather with dogs, it all depends on temperatures. When it comes to snow, that's literally their most favorite thing to do is play in the snow. Um, and rain, we played in the rain today, it wasn't a big deal. But it, it, when it's too hot or too cold, we need indoor space. Um, and so that is very important. There would not necessarily be outdoor space, there may be where we have to go out and like do bathroom breaks and clean that up and then go back inside for very cold times. Um, so, yeah, that would, it would really be more dependent on temperature rather than actual weather.
And there are, Eric, um, help me out with this, there are ASPCA, um, regulations on, on outside, you know, dogs being outside.
And it depends on the size of the dog, the coat of the dog, um, and, and so on, so.
Right, so my point is, that's covered under, under stuff that already exists.
Yeah.
Eric, am I right?
I would assume so, but I'm not familiar with those regulations, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no, no worries. Okay, um, so Rachel, just a little bit more, talk about this hot, the, the six-foot-high construction fence.
Yeah.
Go ahead, talk about it.
Sorry, so that fence is, um, basically the reason I want to do that is I want it to be able to be movable um, for the long term. Um, say I'm at this property for three to five years, I wanna be able to take it with me when I leave. Um, because it's not super, um, cheap. Um, it is very sturdy, um, and it is, it's, it's just as sturdy as a fence that's in the ground as far as dogs are concerned. Um, and it has privacy shields that I have put on my budget to purchase, so everything would be, the dogs wouldn't be able to see out. I don't want them to see out because I don't want them to get stimulated by a squirrel running or whatever. Um, so that, um, but I mean, I, I wish I could, I don't know where there's anywhere you can go and actually look at one of those fences, but they're pretty sturdy. It would be very hard, it would take several of us to move it into place. Never mind a dog trying to like push it over.
Well, that was, that was Peter's question about, you know, jumping over, or my question would be, what about getting under?
Nope, there's no space under, and I did look into that, but when I decided on this because of small dogs that can that, they actually, it actually goes right down to, the fencing part goes right down to the ground, um, so.
Yeah, they can't push past it.
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just jump in for a second?
Yeah, sure, Peter.
Rachel, when, when the, when this, this construction fence is sitting there, I'm assuming it has some kind of footing on it that has members that go in multiple directions. If you have that right close to the property line and the neighbor is lawn mowing, is that part of the fence gonna prohibit them from doing anything if they're, on their property?
So there's already fencing along the back border of the property to the other people's yards all the way around. So we would be actually putting, be putting fencing upon fencing.
Okay, alright.
Alright, good. Um, so Rachel, talk a little bit about the number of dog kennels.
So I actually, um, I have been collecting and will be purchasing more of collapsible, collapsible dog crates, um, which mean that you only have to, you can open them within, you know, a minute, less than a minute, um, to create a, a crate. But in the meantime, they can be stored aside. Um, I currently have about 20 of them, uh, already that I've collected. Um, so, um, in, I've had, um, in my previous permit, they requested that I had as many dog crates available as I have dogs and I've never had to use a dog crate at all.
Right.
That says something, but I do plan on during quiet times in the middle of the day of having crate spaces for the dogs. I also have, um, little fences, they're just, you know, the kind you can set up like a playpen, I guess you would say, for, um, that time period as well.
Here's a, here's a weird little question. How do you get them to go into the crates?
Well, most dogs are crate trained. Um, if they're not crate trained, what we do is slowly train them to do that. And that's actually why I have the fencing, the little small fence areas, so I can enclose them, but there's an open top where they can't jump over it. So in the process of training them, if they're not trained, or if they just don't like a crate, I can, I can confine them in a way that isn't, um, scary for them. But normally, you would, you know, it, it use treats and, um, positive association to train them to go into a crate on their own.
Right. Okay, um, yeah, so that takes care of those questions for me. Alright, so what we're gonna wanna do now is, um, we'll go down the line um, for questions and or comments, so Debbie?
Sorry, had to unmute myself. Um, now, I, I guess, I, I want clarification, make sure I'm understanding you correctly, Rachel. When you say you'd like to have up to 40 dogs at a time, or, or in, you know, in the course of a day, you're, you're, you're talking about that, but you're talking about having it be like 20 dogs in the morning and 20 dogs in the afternoon, so you'd never have more than, say, 20 dogs on site at any given time?
Right, so there may be 15 morning dogs, so that would be maybe two different playgroups that I would have going if it was small dogs or big dogs, because I don't combine them. And then maybe there's 10 that are there the whole day, and then maybe there's 15 in the afternoon. So it probably wouldn't be, I mean, I, I would say tops thirty dogs at a time. Um, but like I said, those are, there's three different play areas inside, and they could be small dogs and big dogs. So they wouldn't all be, um, at one time, like all run, like it sounds chaotic if you think of thirty dogs all in one spot playing around. Although I did visit many, um, of the other, um, doggy daycares in the area, and that is happening. But there are people watching them. So that's the thing is, um, when I talk about ratios of the amount of people per dogs, and I want to keep it at least down to ten, that would be ideal. They, the guidelines are ten to fifteen doll, dogs per supervisor. Um, I, I prefer to keep it down to ten per supervisor so that you really can be on top of everything. So that's what I mean by, so ultimately forty dogs a day would be what we would like to meet financially, to be able to run a business that is making money, but also paying our employees a fair wage and, um, giving a good service. But like I said, it could be fifteen in the morning, ten for the whole day, and fifteen in the afternoon. So that equals a forty.
And when you, when you do the outside play, are you planning on limiting how many dogs you have out per time?
Right, yeah, so it would be like a playgroup. We would have established playgroups based on dogs compatibility and play styles. So maybe, you know, group A goes out and plays for a little while while group B and C are inside playing, and then rotate that in a way that is efficient.
That's, that's all the questions I have. Um, I have some comments for discussion, but I'm good, I'll set with Rachel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, David Sanger, please.
You know, Rachel, a lot of this is, for me, is who you are and, and how much praise everyone has given you in terms of being able to control this business. It feels like thirty dogs at one time at that site is a lot of animals for that site. I did see the site. And so I, I just, I don't know how to really, I don't really work that into my own thinking. First I thought you said twenty dogs at one time, but now you say thirty dogs at one time, so. I just don't know how we as the board can manage all of that. You know, so I, it's hard for me to figure out how to condition this. I do want to support your business, though. You know, also that, you know, it's a cross between, um, fact that there is, and there is a commercial space already there, so that does invite the idea of people putting their businesses in that neighborhood versus the fact that it's a small, it's a compact, small, quiet neighborhood. So I don't know how I'm going to deal with that. I'll need, I'm going to need help with that. If you want to help me with that, uh, that would be, that would be nice, but that's, I think that's my biggest concern. And the idea of doing this on weekends in the beginning doesn't feel like a good idea, and you know, the hours of the day, like seven to nine to be drop off, but not outside activity, maybe five, six o'clock at night to be the pickup, no overnight. Same as what you had in your other permit, the conditions there. And it sounds like you've lived up to those conditions, so that's why I'm saying I, I, much of this is on who you are as much as anything else. But that's my biggest concern is thirty dogs, you know, is a.
Well, I guess, um, I would be able, I would like to be able to alleviate that concern by explaining, um, that there is thirty, um, thirty-eight square foot inside, thirty-eight hundred square feet inside, and then two thousand square feet outside. That's a total of almost six thousand square feet. When you go by the guidelines, if you look up online, the proper ratios of dog to square footage or dog to supervisor, a hundred square feet per dog is what is acceptable in the inhumane in the community of dog daycare and dog care. And so I'm asking for a total of forty dogs in a day with, I don't, it's hard for me to say absolutely twenty dogs in the half a day and then twenty dogs in the afternoon. There, because there could be ten dogs that are there all day. I would like to be able to say between twenty and thirty at one time. And I, and with those guidelines being set, I think that that is inappropriate. It's actually, it offers more space than the, the basic guidelines require per dog. And then also factoring in that there will be people there as well regulating the situations, and there will be several different spaces to be able to put dogs, to have dogs in where it's not, they're all just bunched up in one room in, in a, in a way. So I hope that that would be a way to explain it in a positive way as far as hours of the day. The reason why I pick hour, those hours of the day is that covers people's shifts to go to work. So if they're working at eight o'clock in the morning, that gives them time to drop off their dog by seven. If they're working at nine, that gives them drop, time to drop off by, and then in the evening as well. So I would like to, to just put the, the option out there, then rather than limiting the hours of the day, maybe limit the hours of the day outside if the noise is the concern. Um, and just have maybe six hours a day allowed outside, nine to three, or nine to four or five, you know? Rather than limiting the hours, because that will limit the option of dogs that can come.
Okay, that's good. Uh, Mr. Chairman, one more follow-up, I may. So it sounds like we, even, e- even if you have forty dogs running through the property during the course of the day, at no time will there be more than thirty dogs on the site. Is that fair to say?
I would, I believe so, yes.
Okay. And what would be, what would, well, I'm giving you the high end of what you said, you know, so I'm trying to, and the out, how many dog, what would, what do you think the maximum amount of dogs outside could be at one time?
Well, that could be decided on by everyone here. I, I, like I said, it would generally be like one playgroup at a time, so maybe ten dogs at a time. Honestly, dogs, it's, it's interesting when you get dogs playing, there's less issues and altercations when there's more, because it gives the dogs more options. They don't end up having to play with a dog or have all situational experiences with a dog that are not good, because they can easily change who they play with. So it, but there is a fine line of too much as well. So, um, I think, you know, likely there would be ten dogs outside at a time if we had a full playgroup. Fifteen, but like I said, I'm really flexible on that because we have a lot of space inside also. I just don't want dogs to be cooped up all day, and I don't want to be cooped up all day, but, and I do think it's important for them to get fresh air and play outside. Um, so having that outdoor space is super important, but it's not that they have to be out there all day long.
Okay, so if we, if there was a restrict, if there was a condition that said no more than ten dogs at one time outside, would that be okay?
Yeah, it would be nice if it was fifteen, just to be safe, but it's.
I'm asking you, I'm asking you for the number. First you said ten, now you say fifteen.
Okay, because it's, because it's like, you know, this is also like, I believe these things will be the way they'll be, but, and I want to hear, I will hear any guidelines you say, but it's hard to like put a number on it, so say fifteen would be perfect. No more than fifteen.
Um, you know what, don't worry, we'll put the number on it.
I know you will, but.
Do you have anything else?
Do I?
Yeah.
I do not.
Peter?
But ten would work too.
Alright, thank you.
Deborah, like, like Dave, I, you know, all the complimentary things, I, I would like to see us do, do well. But I want to make sure that if we condition this, we condition it in a way that'll allow you to be successful.
Thank you.
You, you indicated earlier that you're not going to need any lots outdoors. I would think in the late fall, if you're going to be going from seven to seven, you know, at five o'clock or four o'clock, you may have dogs outside that you may want to have light for. So I don't want to condition having no lights. That might impact what you do outdoors.
So I honestly, we would just have to go, we would go indoors when it got dark, just like, you know, kids are playing and they have to go home before the streetlights go out. It's like, the toddler year would adjust to that. I don't need, I don't feel like we need to have extra light and to have, um, dogs playing outside when it gets dark, because we can play inside too. The only thing it would be is like if I need to, I wouldn't be able to take a dog out if it needed to relieve itself, um, out in the back area. Um, but it wouldn't be like a playgroup necessarily. Um, I don't.
You wouldn't want to have employees going out there in the dark with a dog to relieve themselves. I mean, from a safety perspective, want to make sure that you give yourself a little bit of flexibility to have light in the back if you're going to do that.
Yeah, I, if you guys wanted to give me that, I would maybe take advantage of it. At some point, it'd be nice to have the option, for sure. Um, but I don't feel like it's a requirement.
I, I'm thinking just from a practical standpoint in regards to, you know, if you're open seven to seven, at some point you might need to go out at night in the dark to do that final cleanup outside. So I, I agree with, I agree with Peter's point that, you know, I've said you're not going to have the dogs outside playing at night, but I think we should allow her to have light, maybe, and, you know, have to be off by eight or seven thirty, just to have that safety factor and, um, you know, final cleanup of the day kind of thing.
And, and the other question I have, uh, Rachel, in the front, you've got, you're going to have eight spots. When I went by there, it doesn't appear that front of the building is, you know, well paved. Will you need to line it and then put, put a handicap space in the front?
It does seem like we do need to do some handicap, um, parking, putting up a sign, and, um, the planning to board didn't also bring that up, is making lines, specific lines. So it sounds like that is something that people would like to do, um, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to that at all. I, we will be, we will have to make accessibility, um, changes to the building when it, uh, when we actually get for, move forward and are able to do that. So I'm supportive of that, of course. And then as far as the outdoor building, um, like, that might be more of a a building code requirement rather than like the exterior lighting in the back. That may be something that the building inspector may have to decide.
Chairman, that's all I have for questions.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, Jim, when?
Uh, I got a couple of questions. Basically, a concern about the number of dogs at that dense and tight neighborhood. Worried about Saturday and Sunday operation going on there. I'm curious, is Frederick's Road operation cease completely when you move here?
Oh, yes.
Hundred percent it'll stop out there?
Uh, I'm not going to not have dogs in my house, but the, as far as the permit is required, it would be, it would not be, I would not be running my business out of here.
Thank you.
You're on Frederick Road right now. Okay, alright. Alright.
Which is actually a very, very quiet neighborhood. Um, and I know that everyone is saying that the, this neighborhood, uh, Davis Street is quiet, but it does have a auto body business on it. And it did have a woodworking shop that also was very loud previously. Um, and there is the ball fields right across the road of Silver Street. Um, so it is not necessary, and it's right off of Silver Street, so it's not necessarily a quiet neighborhood. Comparatively to my neighborhood currently.
Mr. Chairman, one more question. Oh, Jim, are you done?
No, go ahead, Dave.
How many dogs are at your current site?
I'm allowed ten, up to ten.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The stipulation I actually asked for, because I also felt like I was setting a bar for anyone future that wanted to do this, and I wanted it to be properly done.
Okay, so now the board's going to get into its discussion, Eric. So we want to.
Myself.
Just have the board members. So here are some things to think about. I think it makes, we, we've got to put a limit on the days, a limit on the time, a limit on the dogs. My thinking is that we make this Monday through Friday. I think looking for weekend right now is too much. If after a certain amount of time, she wants to come back and apply for amendment to the permit, that's okay, but it will give the neighborhood time to settle in and see how well it runs, or it doesn't. But, so I'm going to support on Monday through Friday operation. The hours of operation, I think, uh, seven to six is good. I think seven to seven is pushing it in that neighborhood. Every neighborhood's different, but, um, I think if we say seven to six, then it gives other people less, uh, less purchase to complain about. Now, you know, it's going into the dinner hour or when kids are, you know, settling down or whatever. Um, if we limit it to seven to six, it also addresses the question of the necessity of outdoor lighting. Outdoor lighting was not in the application, so the public input did not take that into consideration. So I, at this point, we should leave that as is. We're going to flashlights for, but the other thing is, as Rachel herself said, they're going to bring the dogs in as it's getting darker. And as I said, it was not asked for in the permit. It was not indicated in the application. So the neighbors don't think there's going to be any, uh, outdoor lighting in the back there. So I think it makes some sort of sense to just go as it is for now. And again, if it proves to be an issue, or alternatively, if the building inspector says you got to have this, that's a different issue. That's a different story. So I think it makes sense to just not even, um, put that in here at this point. Numbers. I, I agree with David. Um, this is a concern. You're going from ten to forty, that's a big difference. I think it makes sense to limit overall and to limit by morning and afternoon. So if we wanted to say a limit of forty dogs overall for the day, and then say no more than twenty-five at any one time, that would give the option for the full-day dogs along with the half-day dogs. And it gives her some flexibility in that middle section there. Uh, it's not thirty, but it could be more than twenty. But again, it's a shorter amount of time. So I think the main thing is not more than forty for the day. But the other main thing is, um, in the morning, you know, um, yeah, I mean, it still seems like a lot to me, but we can talk about that. Now I just have to read my writing. Can't read the note that I wrote. That's really great. Oh, so somebody else had brought up the idea of, uh, as part of the time, the opening thing, a time. So I think David, it might have been you, seven to nine for drop off, no dogs outside in the play yard, for want of a better term, um, at that time. I think that also is again, as a condition, it's not burdensome, and it makes a lot of sense in terms of the neighbors coming to understand that, you know, there's no, there's not going to be a bunch of yapping dogs outside at seven in the morning. Excuse me. So I think that might actually make things sort of settle in better. The waste. Yeah, well, the waste. I agree with Peter. Uh, we've been through this before, and Jim. That's a lot of dogs to be dealing with waste of. Period. And then for it to be sitting in a dumpster for X amount of time, uh, especially in heat like we're experiencing now, we know that this is not a good thing. So, um, I, you know, I, I almost think it would be who of us to say the waste has to be removed off property three times a week. And then that way it removes that as an irritant to the neighbors, removes that as something to complain to the Animal Control Officer about. Now, that can be either the employees taking it to the dump or, uh, you know, getting their own dumpster or whatever. But I think, you know, if we want to say twice a week, if we're going to five days, Monday through Friday, yeah, maybe. I just think the more that that happens, the better. The other thing we should talk about is the, the, um, the, the cleaning of the, the play area. Rachel has included a, a comprehensive thing for disinfecting. I'm okay with it. Again, I think, you know, as a condition, if we have to revisit it, then it, you know, then we have to revisit it. As long as the, the dung is removed, that's the big part. The question about the urine, I don't really have the answer. I don't know. The question about the urine, I don't really have the answer. I don't know. In most dogs I've had a time or two. But again, that's something. I think we should have a condition on the eliminated parking spaces. But Eric, is it one or two handicapped required?
One handicap space required.
And marked, correct? I think it makes sense. Rachel didn't say, but I'm assuming she doesn't need signage beyond what's allowed. No? Eric, I'm talking to you.
Signage of, you mean additional signage? What's your question of signage? I missed it, Mr. Chairman.
So does she got a one by two sign on the building or something?
Yes, it would have to meet the requirements for the RA zone, which I think is six square, nine square feet or something. I don't have the exact zoning ordinance in front of me, but it's limited.
Right. And it would, I think we can simply say on the building instead of detached.
Correct. It could be a wall of building signs.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So she didn't ask for it. So if we just, in terms of the signs, say whatever is allowed in the zone, then it becomes an issue with the building inspector. I mean, it's a technical thing.
Who's supposed to speak? But there is, okay, there's current signage.
No, no, right. But it doesn't say happy dog, you know, whatever. So. That's fine. And I want you all to remember that we may sound, you know, whatever we sound, but we're trying to find a happy medium so that everybody can live and not feel the need to go to court. So anyways, I think in terms of the building inspector stuff, we had the parking plan we just talked about, signage, we talked about building code. And then any other things that the building code requires, she can talk to him about. Oh, one thing, I think it would make sense to say at least 20 dog crates. And again, that gives her the flexibility however she wants to do it. If she wants to do the collapsible ones, it's fine. She wants to do the eagle things, whatever. But that way, half the, half the dog, how am I saying it? There's a crate for half the dogs for the entire day. So I think that's reasonable, and she's already planning on that. Hopefully, somebody's writing some of this stuff down.
I am.
Okay, who's I am? Thank you, David. I think, I think, yeah, I'm looking at the last permit. I think the explanation for the construction fence is adequate for me. The fact that it's fenced already behind alleviates some of that issue. The interior stuff is really building code stuff, which the building inspector can deal with. Employees. So I don't, I don't see how we can really, I don't know. She said four to five employees, I think, when we asked.
I didn't hear that. I heard Rachel, Rachel is expressing that at her best, she'd want one person for 10 dogs. So I don't, I don't know where Rachel would be now. Maybe Rachel doesn't want to hire anybody so she could start off and make some money, and then maybe Rachel would want to hire somebody. But if, why would we need to max her employees? Have to.
We don't, I don't think so.
It would really be a minimum employees piece. In other words, I'm not saying we should, but I'm saying the question would be, should there be at least one, two, three, four people to handle all the dogs?
Right. The question that comes for us more is parking considerations, that's why. Because we're saying there are eight parking spaces there now for customers. And of course, the more employees, the fewer parking spaces for customers. I think the eight is okay. I don't have an issue with it.
Right. But I think Joyce will let them park on the other side, the employees park on the other side.
And again, not, not really, you know, for us to worry. I mean, that's great.
The place is it's not, it's not, it's not an issue.
The worry becomes with, as we've seen in other neighborhoods, is with customers of the businesses in residential neighborhood parking, they're taking away parking from the residences in the residential neighborhood. I don't think that'll be the case here. So I don't, we don't need to, Eric, we don't need to, we don't need to say anything about the number of employees, do we?
No, you do not, Mr. Chairman.
So let's just leave it. I mean, my feeling is that. After activity. So, yeah, I mean, if we, and again, I think David brought up, if we say up to 10 dogs outside at any one time, that again, as a condition, shows consideration for the neighbors and also gives Rachel the ability to handle, you know, match the numbers and the employees, whatever. You know, I'm not, 10 is a lot of dogs. 10, 10 up to this point is proven okay where she is. So from past history, I think we can say it's, oh, yeah, 10, 10 seems reasonable outside at any one time. So I think that's fair. The other thing is, I think I would like to, most of, most of what we've talked about is, was in the previous permit conditions. And I'd like to make sure that we put number five from the previous permit and at the discretion of the animal control officer, et cetera, et cetera. Just again, it gives us some flexibility and some recourse. And I think it will make the neighbors feel like they have recourse too. So three years of history, there have been no problems. I think probably if we do this well, the next three years will be just as good. That's my hope. Why don't we go down the line for, now we're into the discussion and, and voting phase here before we make a motion. But so Deb, anything else you want to add in terms of thoughts?
No, pretty much everything I had written down, you've already covered. Good job, Mark.
Thank you. Mr. Singer?
I do. I need Joyce's help with this. In addition, what I heard also was in addition to the removal of the waste three times a week, that the dumpster location would be able to be maybe on the other side of the garage? Is that possible, Joyce? Would you be willing to make that a condition of this permit? Because that space, I mean, I mean, the reason I'm saying that is because if the dumpster smells, where, from my view of the property, if the dumpster smells there, it's really not affecting the neighborhood. Sadly, it might be affecting you, but it's not affecting the neighborhood. And that would deal with the, so would you be, you'd be amenable to the dumpster being on the other side of the, of your Yes. Okay, thank you.
We, we can't make that a condition.
You can't make the dumpster location a condition?
No, because that's not part of the application. That is the Kenny's dumpster. It is not Rachel's dumpster. Now, if she makes a deal with them separately, that's off the board's view. The fact that they offered to go ahead and move that over there is great, and that's fine. But we can't, we can't make it an order of condition. We can't tell another business where they have to move their dumpster.
That's not what I'm saying.
What are you saying?
I'm saying is that there's a condition of this permit that Rachel has a dumpster. It just so happens, she has to have someplace to store the animal waste. Just so happens that the dumpster is owned by Joyce. And the dumpster, we can then say from the residential properties as possible, which means with Joyce's agreement, and when she makes the lease arrangement with Rachel, she will say, aha, you don't have to buy a dumpster. I'll let you use mine. And aha, I will let you place the dumpster here as part of the condition of the lease. So Joyce already said that's okay.
Joyce would have to agree to have the dumpster emptied three times a week. We're getting into making a condition for one, and then
Different businesses. I don't understand. Why can't, if we can make other conditions, why can't we make a condition that the dumpster is located away from the residential property, or the place where the waste is stored is away from the residential, as far away from the residential property as possible?
So what you're saying is you would like to make a condition that Rachel have a dumpster?
No. Take away the dumpster. Rachel has to have a waste disposal, whatever, a, a, a disposal container that's located as far away from the residential properties as possible, and they'll figure it out.
Yes, that's right. That's okay.
Is that a valid condition?
Yes. Along with the condition that the waste be removed off property three times a week.
That's correct. And they'll work out whether they, what those containers, didn't need to get that deep in the weeds. And the last thing was, are we interested, we have a, we have a nine o'clock time as the introduction to the dogs being outside? Do we want end time to the dogs being outside?
Yeah, that could be a good idea. Like four or five, or, you know, I don't know.
Well, Rachel was being a good sport and said three o'clock, but if you want to go past that, I'm sure she'd be very, if we want to go past that, I'm sure she'd be happy about that.
Well, you know.
Nine to four?
I'm okay with four.
It's a nine to four. And this idea of putting a fence up, I don't recall, I couldn't find it. So there's a fence already there. So is this considered a fence that requires any kind of permitting? Don't we have a four to six feet requires a special permit? Or is that not the, I don't remember what the, what's the height of a fence that requires permission?
Fence can be up to six feet tall with no building permit. If it's taller than six feet, a building permit's required.
Okay, great. So then why don't we just, all right, so then that's going to take care of itself anyway.
And in addition, this is not an in-ground fence, so that simplifies that somewhat.
That's my, that's my, that's my comments.
Peter? You have to unmute yourself probably. Did we lose Peter? No, I see him.
Now, listening to all the comments, I have no additional questions or comments.
Okay, Jim?
I have no additional questions or comments, just like the idea of the animal control officer checking in with us in a couple of weeks and reporting back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, is there anything I missed?
I think you covered the parking, correct, Mr. Chairman? Required one handicap spot. Did you cover the parking?
Yeah, I mentioned that. I had that. I'm sorry.
Good, good.
Okay, so hold on a minute here. I gotta find something. There we go. All right.
Any way I can just talk about the fight, the hours, just to, just put a thought in your brains and maybe to consider?
It's really, I'm not convinced it would benefit you, but, yeah, go ahead.
My only concern is 6:00 PM, people get out of work. Would there be any way to extend the hours from 7:00 to 6:30 so that gives people enough time to pick up their dog? That's the only thing I wanted to put out there. Thank you.
So I just missed, what was that again, for God's sake? All right. So what I'm going to do is I'll make a motion here, and then we'll start on the condition. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
If you'd like, Mr. Chair, I can make the motion since I have the list.
Well, do you, oh.
Add to my list if I screw it up.
You're going to add to my motion. You'll add the list.
Okay.
So I move that we grant the application of Rachel J. Quay to be located at 427 Davis Street, Assessor's Map 113, Lot 30, which is located in the Urban Residential Zoning District for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-6.1C and 200-8.3 zoning ordinance in order to allow the operation of a dog daycare center at this location with the following condition. Go ahead, David.
Weekday, weekdays only?
Monday through Friday.
Second, I'm willing to listen to a friendly amendment that the hours of operation be from 7:00 to 6:30 PM during those Monday through Friday days. That
Let's come back to that.
Okay, that there, there's going to be a container on the, on the, she will have a container to deal with the animal waste. The business will have a container to deal with the animal waste. That container will be located as far away from the neighbor's property, as residential neighbor's property as possible. And we'll have, and the waste will be removed from those containers at least three times a week.
Off the property.
Off the property, yeah, or removed off the property, sure.
Go ahead.
The number of dogs overall allowed on the premises, overall during the course of a day are 40? Or with no more than 25 dogs at one time at the business? The number, the time out, for outside use, for the dogs outside, the number of dogs outside at any time will be no more than 10. And the time for dogs to be outside will be from the hours of 9:00 AM till 4:00 PM. There will be, I don't know if we said a number, but she proposed, Rachel proposes, that there'll be eight parking spaces as per the application with one space being handicapped accessible.
Designated.
Designated, yep. Rachel will clean the outdoor area per her specifications in her application. We will put the animal, the animal officer provision that you had for her previous permit, which I don't have written down.
Hold on, I'll read it. At the discretion of the animal control officer, unscheduled site visits shall be conducted at the property. The animal control officer shall submit a report to the board within two weeks after any site visit. If the animal control officer submits two negative reports to the board, the applicant shall come back before the zoning board appeals during their next regularly scheduled meeting.
That's it. That provision, I like that provision to be put in. And there'd be at least 20 dog crates on the premises at one, at one time.
Yep.
And yet, the last thing is that the permit is an individual, per, individual permit to Rachel and not a permit and her business, is to Rachel for her business and is not a permit that attaches to the real estate.
Right, correct. Also, that there be no overnight boarding of dogs allowed.
No overnight boarding.
Yeah, we did that, we did that, we did that, we did that. Just one other question for the board. In the last permit, we had a condition about providing a protected area for dogs in times of climate weather. I don't think we need that here because there's room inside.
Yeah, I'm not, but
Yeah, okay.
Treating the dogs with anything but mucho love.
Okay. We talked about, yeah, we got that. Okay, so now we're back to the condition on hours of operation. You know, people work all times. And for three years, seven to six has worked okay. If we're going to say 6:30, then should we say 7:30 earliest in the morning? You know, that's the thing. So we're saying 12 hours a day. We're saying 60 hours a week. You know, it's not enough for me to kill it, but I'd sort of like to hear what the other members of the board think of.
I'd like to actually chime in here. As somebody who works outside of Greenfield, it is very difficult to get to use a business in Greenfield because I'm always gone when that business is closed. I leave it, I leave Greenfield at 7:00 in the morning, and I personally am not back. So if I'm back at five, in Greenfield at 5:30, it's a fantastic day. So I would like to see, you know, the 7:00 to 6:30 because I think it's a practical application. It'll allow people in Greenfield to use the businesses in Greenfield as opposed to forcing them to go outside of Greenfield for It'll allow people in Greenfield to use the businesses in Greenfield, as opposed to forcing them to go outside of Greenfield for it.
I agree with that.
You agree with Deb, with Deb's?
Cause I've worked outside of Greenfield, very rarely, well, I go home, I'll leave seven, come back at six, six-thirty sometime, so.
Everybody works outside of Greenfield because there's no
That's not the way that Greenfield gives you the impression, I can tell you that.
Don't not get me going down that road. I tried, Russ Thomas and I tried, but oh well, um Jim, what do you think?
Agree with Deborah on that, yes.
Okay, so I guess my only comment or thing to think about is, this is all great for people who work, but we need to think also about um imagining yourself with, you know, well, twenty-five dogs next door. So you're, you're sitting down to dinner. As I said, do I think it's a a deal killer for me? No, I'm just, you know, I think we're doing pretty good work here for Rachel, I wanna make sure that we're doing as good work for the neighbors, the residents. Because at the end of the day, the whole zoning thing is about people being able to enjoy their property um with as few restrictions as the government um can get away with. So uh I think it's four to one to go to six-thirty, and I I'm okay, I'll live with that, so.
Yeah, I think Dave had a comment.
David would make the amendment to to six-thirty, I think.
I will, and you know, we've limited the outdoor time from nine to four. So that means that the dogs are inside from four to six-thirty, so that this, you know, and it is, it's a, it's a business that it, it's not like they're building a new business in the, in the, in the neighborhood, it's that, that property's been there for many years. So I wanna support Rachel and
Yes and no, that's actually a uh controversy. Set empty long enough for it to grandfathering to revert, but that's an issue for somebody else another time.
Well, that's, that's not before us, as the judges say.
Indeed, um okay, is there anything else that we have missed that else has?
If we did, it's five of ten, so.
Dude, we've gone to one-thirty in the morning before, that's, that's okay.
I'm a morning person, I cannot stay up that late.
Yeah, that's what, that's what somebody else said, oh well.
It's gonna fall in a coffee, so let's, let's get
So any further discussion? Anybody, okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the permit as amended? Sorry, yep, I'm fading.
We're waiting for you.
Any opposed by the same sign, okay, um so, motion carries. Um so Rachel, I think you were here when we explained everything before. Eric will get this typed up, it will be a long one. But hopefully next week, and then he'll file it with the city clerk, and then from then on, you got twenty days. Does she leave, or is she still with us? So uh so congratulations, good luck, and hopefully, hopefully, everything that we worry about is not a reason to worry, so.
I will do my best to make sure that you have no worries, thank you so much.
Best of luck.
We should do all our meetings this way.
Yeah. Listen, I I was at another meeting, I won't say which, where one of the other members showed up with a, his wife got him a nice big glass of Scotch while the meeting was going on.
No, that's not a
No, that won't happen here anyways, alright, so Peter.
You know what I'm wearing under my shirt, do you?
You don't know what I'm wearing below my, yeah.
I meant below my shirt, you know.
Everybody stay healthy, good night, thank you.
Alright.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor, I
Uh no, without objection, uh Eric stay on for a second, everybody else.
Good meeting.